They had this house called the, I think it was called the Florida Solar House or the Florida Energy House or something like that. And all these neat gadgets, and we're talking about nineteen seventy-four.
Right.
Had all these neat gadgets and it had solar panels on the roof.
Mm-hmm.
And here we are, X number of years later, and, uh, and you would just think that we are the Sunshine State and that we would be so leading the way in solar power. With that said, I'm hopeful over the next seven and a half years, this administration, that we, uh, that we really, again, lead by example in regard to solar. Um, that we put it on every single building possible that, that we have in the city. Um, that our, that our vehicles, especially our smaller vehicles, all convert over to electric and that sort of thing. We're not going to solve the problem, the, the city's problem, the county's problem, or the world's problem by ourselves, but we can lead by example. And, and, and when people see us driving a fleet of little electric cars around town and every single one not only says City of Tampa on the side, but on the front and back it says electric powered, then they'll go, hey, that looks pretty neat, why don't I do that? So anyway, that's what I look forward to working with you, John, and, and, uh, and the new sustainability officer as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and I think as the-
Who's that person going to be under, by the way, now that we have the reorg?
Yeah, direct report to me.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, the, uh, the administration has divided up the, the five transforming Tampa's Tomorrow initiatives. Um, so we have yet to kick off the, we want to get the, uh, chief sustainability and resilience officer in place before we kick off that advisory team. And then, like everything else, we will make sure we have the best and the brightest. And, and, you know, of course, the mayor has a sense of regionality. We want to make sure that we take you from the doorstep all the way to the Tampa Bay area because we share a lot of our resources and we have a lot of the same risk factors. So, uh, my working relationships, um, with Commissioner Janet Long, for example, over in Pinellas. She was at this recent summit that we're at. So we're all talking the same language. And that was the, the best part of you approving the, uh, the updated MOU at the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council is that we can work cohesively, collaboratively, collectively on all the issues that face us in the Tampa Bay area. And even better, part of the Netherlands project was, I was able to meet all of my counterparts or all the other interested parties all the way around the Gulf states. So we can look at this even beyond just our region and beyond the state. We can leverage our strength, uh, all the way over to Houston, if you will. So, um, those are the kind of things that will make a difference for us. Because if you think about it, a lot of our, uh, you know, and I know this from obviously doing the emergency management, our fuel supply comes in, uh, through the Gulf. And, and so we all have to collectively look at these things. In our fuel, your fuel resiliency, our critical infrastructure and our key resources. And I think this is going to be an interesting meld, and the mayor has a similar background. It'll be partly emergency management, partly homeland defense, and a lot of new things in the environmental, the cultural, and the built environment space. So it's going to be a fantastic blend of experience going into this plan. I'm really excited for it.
Councilmember Carlson.
Forgot my name. First of all, I think that, that the best kind of government hires the best and brightest people. And you and the mayor have done an outstanding job building your team. Thank you for getting, um, the best people and really smart people. Um, I also think that the only way we can be the best we can possibly be is to look at the best in the world. Um, too often, in Florida especially, we look to other cities in the United States or other cities in Florida, and they don't always do it the best way either. So, um, getting with the best in the world is a, is a great investment. And I'm glad that, um, that you and the mayor made that investment. It's well worth it. And I hope that we can find other programs like that, uh, that, that our other, um, senior leadership will go to, uh, from economic development to transportation and other things. We've got to, we've got to make sure we've got the best ideas everywhere in the world. And I know you've been deep into that, so I appreciate you doing it. I appreciate your analytical approach to it. Um, there's great expectation for this position that would, that's going to be filled. Um, especially in my district, I get questions about it everywhere I go.
Absolutely.
And the great thing is that you all announced from the beginning that you were going to hire this position. And so it gives me an answer where I can say, hey, and sometime soon we're going to have this position. But once the person comes on board, there will be some, some things that we can do that are maybe easier, that will get lots of publicity. And there are things that are really difficult and are going to cost a lot of money. And you all showed from the beginning that you're not afraid to take on big issues and, and address them head-on and, and even spend the money, and council supported you in it. Um, my suggestion is as we get into it, let's try to tackle the big things as quickly as possible again. And, and then, um, the, 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 the easy things that get lots of publicity are, are, are nice to have. But the, as you know from that conference, the, the really big issues are looming out there. And somehow we've got to address those, especially since my district could be underwater in, in sometime in the future. So we've got to figure out, you know, what to do with everybody's investment there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number ninety-one.
All right. So this is, uh, the request from the administration. If I'm correct on the, um, on the opportunity to present four mini workshops over the departments.
Okay.
So-
You passed out this, um-
Yeah, the opportunities, and that's really just, first, let me, let me preface that, those options with the concept. So the concept, if you remember, we were going through the budget process, uh, for FY twenty. As we did the budget presentations in front of council, uh, there are certain things that popped up project-wise, district-wise. And what the administration is looking to work with council on this year is to start out with, we have four administrators essentially now. The mayor's press conference yesterday solidified those positions. And the concept would be all four administrators would come in for a period up to two hours within a workshop, embedded in a workshop, and present their organization structure, their inputs, their outputs, their outcomes, and their efficiencies. And do that with, uh, uh, much brevity, but at the same time, allow council to ask questions about things that have come in front of you iteratively over the last, you know, last six to nine months, and kind of demystify why department staff does things the way they do in the hope that when we go into the budget planning cycle, you will be more informed on the things that, that they have available to them. We could talk about rightsizing organizations. You can talk about efficiencies, effectiveness. Most importantly, my favorite is equity and opportunity and resources going to the community. But you would be able to have that question and answer period, uh, again. You know, whether we did it in thirty minutes or two hours, the block was designed for a maximum time certain of two hours. But we could do that in four sessions, leading up to the budget planning cycle. And then, uh, myself and the, and the CFO and the, uh, revenue and finance team would come in and start workshopping with you on the budgets. And the, the ultimate end game in this is we get to the budget hearings in the later part of the year, towards the end of the fiscal year, that we have a very smooth process with council, administration, and most importantly, the public. And instead of that compressed journey that we had last year going into the budget planning cycle. So this is just our extension as administration to offer some of this time. It's open to how you want to do it, whether you want to do it in one full day, whether you want to chunk it up into four days or chunk it up into eight days. But I would need about two hours for each of those four administrators to come in and give a high-level overview of the organization, the resources, and then turn it over to you to ask those questions that seem to surface, you know, somewhat frequently over some of these items that we've brought in front of you on the agenda. So that was just a number. Again, it's totally up to council how you want to do it, or even if you want to do it. I want to make sure that's clear. This is just the administration's suggestion.
All right. Councilman Goode.
I think this is a smart idea. And that way we won't have issues in the end of, people say people are holding up budgets. We're fighting with the mayor and administration. It's a great idea, uh, chief of staff, to have these workshops so we understand what that administrator is doing, what actually is turning over, what's not. And that way I don't have to be saying, well, why is this not happening? I'm not seeing this. My community's saying that, so I know. And I think that's a key factor to know, to know. Uh, so I'm, I'm all in favor. Uh, I, I wouldn't want to have all of them. I, I, I would like to have those independent sessions to where I can be focused on one administrator in that, that whole department that they carry versus trying to get, cram all this stuff in. So I prefer to do, to have the sessions. And again, it's council's pleasure, but I prefer sessions.
Anybody else? So I was looking at this and I like option, I mean, I'm open to whatever. If you want to do a full day of eight hours, not that, it's like a full school day. But the four two-hour sessions, uh, to coincide with current workshops, so between March, April, May, June, as Councilman Goode said, two hours here so we can stay focused.
Yep.
You know, do it once a month and build up to that, to that budget time.
Perfect.
I think makes the most sense. That's just my opinion. I don't know how the others feel. Councilmember Dingfelder?
No, I, I'm in agreement with, with both of you, I think. And thank you, Chief Bennett, for this, uh, idea. I think it's a great idea, and I think we should do, uh, two hours every month. And, and also, I, it might be implicit in what you're suggesting, John, is that, uh, uh, if you, if you have underneath you, as an administrator, you have three or four department heads, that they would also be in attendance-
They'll be here.
-to answer the questions or however you want to present it. But at least they're here to, you know, give us the meat, um, in case issues come up or what have you. So, um, but no, I, I think it's a good idea. I think if we went eight hours like a school day, some of, some of us would have to cut class like I used to, you know.
I'll give you a diploma if you stay on here.
You got a certificate of participation?
Um, no, that, Councilman Dingfelder, that's exactly the plan is, the reason I was going to use a single administrator to present was for efficiency. You turn over the mic four or five times, now we've, two hours is gone. But, uh, we're going to, each presentation will look similar. The data obviously will be different. Um, you know, parks is going to look different than human resources, et cetera. But you'll see in context, like I said, the, the inputs, outputs, outcomes, and those efficiencies, plus some of the key projects they're working on. But then you'll have the whole cadre of directors to ask if you want to talk to purchasing directly or you wanted to talk to code enforcement, you wanted to talk to, all those Q and A's will be here. So we're, we're going to try and compress our presentation so you have more Q and A time. But like I said, I think somewhere between, you know, uh, four, four opportunities and two-hour workshops should get us through this. Then we go into the budget finalization. You're familiar with what we're doing and vice versa. And we get to the budget hearings for the public. We all seem unified in our understanding with our decision packages and the things that work for the district as well as the strategic plan of, of the city. And by the time we get to the, uh, the budget final votes, hopefully there'll be no, no mysterious, uh, things going on for us to showcase.
The only thing, Mr. Chairman, one other thing, and I say this respectfully, what I, just one out of seven, but what I would love to see focused on, and maybe, again, this is implicit in what you're saying, is the new stuff. You know, a lot of, we've all been around-
Of course.
-uh, in, in a variety of capacities. So we sort of know the day-to-day operations of the city, et cetera, et cetera. But the new stuff, you know, the, this is the mayor's initiative on such and such. And this is, you know, or perhaps even might be in response to some of the discussion that you've heard in this room.
Exactly.
You know, um, and I'm not to say, I'm not diminishing the day-to-day stuff. That's important too. Um, but really the, you know, the new initiatives and that sort of thing, I think we could have really some dynamic conversations on those types of things.
And, and that's exactly where we would want to head with this, is, um, we expect to keep the level of service that you already see and hopefully the community enjoys, but talk about where we're moving the city through these key strategic initiatives. So, all right.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, and my interest will still be the same, which is to try to rebuild the, uh, general fund reserve. One thing, last time, you all and we, you weren't even here yet. But the mayor and, and we inherited the last budget. I think the mayor was able to tweak a little bit. But we all got lobbied a lot in the last two weeks of it. And we pushed a couple of things through, which, which I think we all agreed on, and they, they were good decisions to make. But, um, but now I'm getting a lot, I'm getting, you know, requests from all kinds of nonprofits and everything. And I hope that we can, kind of as you said, but I'll say it more explicitly. I hope we can sort all that out so that, that nonprofits all know that if they want something, they got to let us know early, or let you know early so that we don't end up at the last two weeks. Because I'm, in the last two weeks, I'm going to say no this time.
Yeah.
Um, you, they either need to know about the schedule or don't participate.
No, I appreciate that feedback. And, uh, the mayor has approved the chief financial officer and myself to work on a, on a, on a strategic approach for our nonprofits because we need to see new opportunities in that space, in the arts and entertainment and, and those kind of things that benefit the city. So we want to make sure we stratify our funding across more opportunities that have accountability, but at the same time, uh, deliver, um, consistent, but then new opportunities across the city. So we're heading down the exact road you're talking about.
Mr. Chairman, would you like a motion, I think for the benefit of the clerk and the, uh, Mr. Shelby?
March will be here before we do.
Yeah, let's, I'll make a motion to, to accept the, the suggestion from Snap Option Two, beginning in March.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder with a second, and Councilman Goode's for Option Two on this memo, which I have here in case you need it. Uh, all in favor?
Can I, can I ask just for clarification? Um, does that specify a time certain?
Uh, do you want to do it at the end of the, on a workshop day, but as the last item?
Maybe start in like ten-thirty or something, or ten?
You, you tell me.
Um, I'm open to suggestions. I know probably March and April might have other things, but by, you know, by May and June, we probably don't have as much.
Yeah. Ten-thirty time certain?
Just never know when, when they're going to be done if we put it at the end.
Why don't we say ten, and then that way, if it's ten-thirty, it's ten-thirty.
So ten, uh, for time certain on the workshop days for those months, beginning in March. Right?
Yep.
Okey-dokey.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, so unanimous yes. Uh, next up, we're going to go to number eighty-two, Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. This is, uh, home leaf blowers.
Thank you, Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. I am here on item eighty-two, which is an item, um, a request from city council to come back with two ordinances. One was to clarify, um, the section of the code that prohibits blowing debris into the streets in our drainage systems and to clarify that that applies to leaf blowers. I have presented language to you similar to what we had discussed previously, amending section twenty-one dash nine. Um, that is included in your backup and is, if it's your pleasure, you could go forward and have it for first reading today. There's no public hearing at first reading. The public hearing would be at second reading. Um, the other ordinance that I submitted to you was dealing with an exemption to the noise ordinance for power tools dealing with property maintenance. And although I submitted language to you on that one, I am requesting that that item be continued out to a later date to allow the legal department to work with the administration to try to, um, get a better grasp of the real-world implications of what I drafted because there were some concerns with some of the people who are charged with maintaining the right-of-way, and we didn't want to have any unintended consequences. There may be another way that we can draft it that, um, would, would resolve those issues, and we just didn't have time to get that to you today. So in some chapter, the change to chapter twenty-one dash nine that is in your backup, that ordinance is prepared and ready to be read if you so want. Um, and the other one I am requesting to be continued to a later date.
Okay, any questions? Councilman Carlson, you were the, the maker of this motion, if you had any.
We spoke in advance and I agree with what, what she suggested, so.
So we can move on the first one, and the second you asked for more time?
Did you pick a date for the moving?
Um, I would ask Ms. Sullivan. Since I won't be here, I don't want to commit other people.
I would push it out a few months just because, again, the, um, until, it wasn't until the last minute that we started hearing about all these unintended consequences, like how it would impact street cleaning in Ebor, for example. Um, and I just don't know how quickly we can identify all the issues from all the different city departments.
Is there a date you recommend?
There's April sixteenth, which is a regular session, a little more than two months from now.
So I, I, I move that we move it to April sixteenth.
Second. All right, and this is for the second-
Second one.
-ordinance here on item number eighty-two.
That would be the, yeah, that would be the ordinance amending chapter fourteen.
Okay, so, uh, the motion would be to continue this to April sixteen.
Yes.
All right.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Citra.
Yes.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, any questions on the third ordinance? No? Someone like to read it?
So, just so we're all clear on what we're doing, over and above the, um, just the title, the, it looks like the change that we're making in regard to the, the blowers as related to noise, that's about, we're adding an additional paragraph that basically includes, uh, lawn mowers, chippers, clippers, blowers, tools, and tractors. And then it speaks to, I don't know, tell us, tell us how this works.
Well, chapter fourteen is actually the one that we're requesting, which is the noise one. That is the one we're requesting additional time to-
Do you want more time on that?
Yeah, to review.
So on the, on the other one, public drainage systems?
Correct. Uh, that's the one amending section twenty-one dash nine. And that is simply a clarification to, to call to everyone's attention that lawn blowers are included in the prohibition of, um, of putting things in, in the drainage system. There's already a prohibition of putting any foreign debris into our drainage systems. But city council thought it was important to clarify and call attention to the fact that leaf blowers and other types of blowers are specifically included in that prohibition. And so it's, it's a clarification. The city council felt it was an important clarification.
What's the penalty and what's, what's the enforcement mechanism, anticipated?
Yes, it is a civil citation, and as we discussed earlier, if it is an individual who's, who is violating section twenty-one dash nine, it is a level-one citation, which is a seventy-five-dollar fine. If it's part of a business, then it is a level-four citation, which is a four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine.
We're allowed to differentiate between individuals and businesses?
Yes, we are, and we in fact have been since this ordinance went into place. That's not new.
Do we know anything about the past enforcement of this?
Yes, I believe you'll recall, we had discussions about that, um, when this came before you previously, and Salvage Area was here. And there has not been a great amount of enforcement. And I think that's one of the reasons city council felt it was important to make this clarification to everyone. So both people in the city side, as well as people in the community, are aware that this is expressly prohibited, and perhaps that will help with enforcement down the line.
So, so has this been, um, massaged out into the neighborhood associations? I'm, I'm very concerned, you know, uh, uh, Mr. and Mrs. homeowner, uh, is out there blowing on a Saturday morning, just like they always have, cleaning up their yard and doing their thing. I'm not advocating that it's the right thing to do to, to blow your leaves out into the street. But a lot of times, I think people realize that the city has these street sweepers that come along and pick up, you know, pick up the leaves out of the street. So again, I'm not advocating that people do that, and I'm not saying it's the right thing for our system or anything else. But it does concern me that here they may have been doing this for decades, and all of a sudden, uh, somebody, an officer or a code enforcement officer comes along and says, oh, by the way, here's your seventy-five-dollar ticket. You know, I, I think, uh, we should make sure that we get the word out. If we're going to pass something like this, I think we should make sure that we get the word out for a period of time, uh, that it's well-publicized, that, that the neighborhoods and the mayor's office does everything they can to circulate this, no pun intended, well, maybe a pun intended. But, um, anyway, that's, uh, I'd like to go a little cautiously on this. And I realize it's been on the books for a long time, but we're just sort of beefing it up a little bit.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, and, and you all remember the, the genesis of it is that, um, one of the biggest problems we have in the neighborhoods is flooding, and especially in South Tampa. And the neighborhood associations and leaders I've spoken to are, are very in favor of it because it's not about somebody's right to blow things into the street. It's about the fact that the city spends millions of dollars pulling that stuff out of the gutters, out of the storm drains, so that the roads don't flood. And, um, and so the, the idea is we'll save, uh, taxpayers a lot of money by doing this. And there, ideally, there will be education on it. We don't control that side of it. But ideally, there will be education and, and, uh, and people will know about it, and we can socialize it through the neighborhoods. But, um, it's, it, this is, is something small that could save us a lot of money, a lot of trouble, um, with flooding.
Councilman Moran.
Thank you very much, Chairman. The, the additional cause, like Councilman Carlson said, is not only in the inlet as you put it in, but when it gets to the plant, you have to take that out. And there's an, an additional cost there of, uh, not only personnel power, but chemicals and things that you have to do to clean it up, which is really, and I hate to say this, but that, that, that's been in chapter twenty-seven, if I recall, for a long, long time. And if the public don't know it by now, you don't have to get education if they're not to put junk into the, the sewer lines. That's a normal activity you don't do, and they've gotten to the point they don't give a damn. I'll put it just the way it is. And, uh, if you go by in the mornings and you drive by any intersection in the morning between seven-thirty and nine o'clock, you'll see commercial individuals going into the, into the, the drains. It's not today, it wasn't yesterday, it's been going on for the last twenty, thirty years, and the border wouldn't have been. So that, that's, uh, they, they know better, but I make a suggestion. We mail out water bills every month. And that water bill, you can add a little paper that doesn't cost anything other than the printing of it to notify at least the people who have water consumption in the city. That would be ninety-nine percent of the taxpayers. And then mail out a homeowners association to them and let God help them if they put it in the sewer, because I can't.
Could we hear from, could we hear from Mr. Duncan, uh, who was in charge of that street? If, if it's okay with Mr. Chairman? I mean, any, any staff opinion on this? Uh, Mr. Carlson was identifying some, uh, big numbers in terms of cleaning out the, the stormwater, you know, sewers, and I know that's true. But, uh, anyway, you all looked into this, and how do you feel about notification to the community?
Uh, Gene Duncan, Transportation Stormwater Services. Uh, it is a bit of a, um, a tight rope, as many things are when we're dealing with habits people have and consequences that, that they create. Uh, we've, uh, worked with Ms. Kurt on this, and we're certainly agreeable to, uh, looking to make sure we don't have those unintended consequences for a good reason of why we're doing this. But I do have to agree with, with most of you of the things you've said. This does create a problem for our stormwater system, even though we are in a little better place in terms of our maintenance because of the fee that we have now to work with. We certainly don't want to use as an excuse to not address the problems that we're having with how the system's being treated by some of our residents. So we're, we're interested in doing something to look into that matter, and whatever seems the best course of action, we're happy to work with everyone on that.
All right. Councilman Citra.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Kurt, thank you for bringing this back to our attention. I can remember twelve, sixteen years ago with people in Beach Park, Sunset Park, Colberth Isles, we're all complaining that all the stuff was blown down into stormwater, and it was going out into their canals, and they were wanting for, for dredging to take place. Uh, so I think this, especially in the South Tampa area, will help out immensely. And if there is no further discussion, Mr. Chair, I'd be more than happy to read the ordinance.
Take it away, John.
Thank you very much. If I may, an ordinance being presented for first reading, an ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida relating to leaf blowers being used to blow debris in the public drainage system, making revisions to the City of Tampa Code of Ordinance, Chapter Twenty-One, Stormwater Management, amending section twenty-one point nine, Protection from Public Drainage System, repealing all ordinances and part of ordinances in conflict, providing severability, providing an effective-
Okay.
We have a motion from Councilman Citra with a second from Councilman Miranda, and we have a question from Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you. I'd like to offer a, an amendment that, um, that might speak to a, a first, a first warning. Again, I think I expressed my concern a little while ago, uh, you know, in regard to folks who just don't know, and then all of a sudden they get hit with a seventy-five-dollar ticket, uh, for something that they felt very comfortable doing for decades with, you know, out of ignorance. You know, they don't, they don't know the difference. So, um, anyway, I'm not sure exactly how the language would work and how the applicability work, would work, but, um, that would be my proposal, is to, uh, to include some type of, uh, warning, uh, program into that as a first warning instead of a straight-up ticket.
Any objections to that?
Didn't you say you looked at that or not?
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department, um, we looked at warnings for the motor vehicle ones. That was not part of the motion for this one. The way this one works for the businesses, there is a requirement that a written notice be sent to the business before the business is held liable. That's already in there, um, for the business portion of it. I would just, um, let city council know, and I would bring this up, I'm going to bring this up when we go to the next part about motor vehicles. You have already had a very difficult, the city has already had a very difficult time enforcing this for the reasons that we discussed at length at your last two times you discussed this, which was, we don't have a squad of people who are out in the streets necessarily tasked with identifying this. So, um, and you don't necessarily have the same people out there every day in the same location. So we could add a warning, but if you add a warning, it's very unlikely that that is going to be tracked in a way that next time that person will get a citation. So that is a policy decision. Um, I can amend the ordinance or somebody can amend the ordinance, um, to identify that for you, if that's what you would like to do.
Just clarification, uh, you said the businesses will get a warning?
The, yes, that is because the- The, yes, that is because the business is not out there when, they're, the business entity is not the entity who's out there blowing it. So if an employee is out there, um, doing the leaf blowing, or somehow putting debris into our, into our drainage system, then before the business is held liable, because they're not actually there, a written notice would be sent to the business. And then if any of their employees does it again, then the business is held, um, also liable for that, even though they're not actually there doing it.
All right. I mean, that makes sense, but again, we're giving businesses a note, uh, you know, a warning, a shot over the bow on this, and I think that the homeowners deserve the same.
Councilman Dink.
We always want to educate the public whenever we put something into action. And I'm gonna tell you right now, on any Saturday you go on, or any Sunday, people are out there blowing their lawns. So, my only problem is what education are we gonna tell the public how to blow their lawns? How should it be blown? I think the key is education here, and I think we have to do a job of communicating that to the public about leaves or blowing grass, blowing dirt. I think people don't know to know. People get out and they, they, they get a blower, I'm gonna make my, my yard look nice, my, my driveway is dirty, and I'm gonna blow the lawn. So, where does that dirt go? Uh, what direction should I be pointing the blower to, to capture that debris or what have you? So I just think if we're gonna put something in action, we need to have an education component to that, so people can know the do's and don'ts on how to blow their yard, lawn, and not put stuff in that drain. I just think that's a, a key component. And I think with your motion, if you can get that in there, there needs to be an education component in there, 'cause you're not gonna be able to enforce that, enforce this with the thousands of people we have in this city. It's gonna be hard to do it, Ms. Kurt, you're not gonna be able to just go out there and be able to have that kind of enforcement.
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department, you certainly, if you choose to move forward with this ordinance at all, you certainly could request that the administration consider some avenues to do some public outreach on this, so that people are aware, it's already in place, but, um, certainly you could request that the administration do some public outreach.
Ms. Kurt, you said, you said in place?
This prohibition is, it is already prohibited. City Council had requested that we clarify this provision, so it was more obvious to everyone that this action was already prohibited. It already was prohibited to put anything in the drainage, by blowers or not. It just now specifically points out to everyone, so people should be on a higher level of notice that this conduct is prohibited. And that makes a lot of sense, since you previously had, um, information supplied to you at, at, at at least one previous hearing, uh, or workshop, that we were having challenges enforcing this, uh, and that people probably were out there doing it. So I think that it makes a lot of sense, but I think the appropriate motion would be to request the administration to do some public outreach on this issue.
All right. The, the public outreach, you said this is on the books already, per se, is there a pamphlet with this already? Is it something already, uh, that we have in place?
I am not aware, I am not aware of anything. I'm not personally aware of anything.
And I've been, I've been, was a cop a long time, but I've never seen anything like, uh, given out to, to, to community, uh, associations or anything like this. So, uh, that's why I, I drove that course, maybe there needs to be a pamphlet or something, the neighborhood associations that we can give, be given to those homeowners, so they can know. That's just my comment on that.
Councilman Moran.
Thank you very much. I understand it's been, and, and believe me, I think it's been in there for at least fifteen, twenty years, that law. Was it enforced? Not to any degree. Not to any degree at all, by anyone. And I'm not here to cast stones against anyone. However, uh, maybe the motion ought to be that we send a director to the administration to send out in the water bill, a separate item in a different color. You know, with red, you will get fined so much if you do this, this, and explain that. And the next water bill goes out within the next three weeks. I imagine, three or four weeks at most, three weeks. This, what is the law regarding a passage of something in first reading? Can you hold it for more than two weeks?
Certainly, yes.
All right, so what I'm saying is, in order to facilitate both sides, it, it would be common sense to have the administration, ask the administration, to send inside the water bill, which doesn't cost much, there's no stamp cost in it, because it's one, one piece of paper, about three inches by about seven or eight inches long, and it tells you the fine and the, the, to give first warning, then the city's gonna have to find out who was warned, who was not warned. It becomes a nightmare. Even though you have computers, it's still a nightmare. Then somebody says, oh, so-and-so, you know, he was warned and I wasn't. How do I know he was warned and you weren't? So what I'm saying, let's do it to all the water, take care, I'm sure the media's gonna pick up and, and say something. I would imagine they will, because they're not fake news, they're real news. So what I'm saying is that if we do that, pass this today, and put it off for six weeks, so everybody's comfortable, and if the public doesn't know in six weeks and they get it in the water bill, I don't know what else to tell you. It'll never be enforced then.
Councilman Citro.
That's just a suggestion.
Brilliant idea, Councilman Miranda, brilliant idea. Uh, we spend so much time looking down at our telephones and our iPads, we never hardly looked down at the ground. For years, for years, there have been little placards, they started out this big on every stormwater drain, said, "Do not dump flows into the bay." They're now down to about this size, but it says the same thing. Most people, if they would look at the drainage, as they're dumping whatever oil, whatever debris, it would say, "Do not dump flows into the bay." Most people have seen this, and I feel that most people already know. I agree with Councilman Miranda, on your water bill, send it out, let people know that. I, I'm sure whatever enforcement is going to be doing this, whether it's TPD or code enforcement, is not gonna be out there writing citations immediately, and they will more than likely say, hey, rules have changed. Don't do this anymore. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Mr. Miranda, for, um, deferring this for a variety of reasons, and the other thing I'd, I'd like to hear, um, when it comes back, Ms. Duncan, uh, specifically, if you could maybe check with code enforcement, see what sort of mechanism we might have to, you know, maybe work with the Acela system, or, or some other, um, some other similar program we ha, we already have in the city, that might be able to address the warning. So, you know, so the warning goes with the, the, you know, the home, I'm sorry, uh, the warning goes with the home, and, um, and maybe, maybe we already have something that code enforcement is using, or, or like I say, the Acela system, or something like that, that we could just modify slightly to give people warnings. And then if, if people get warnings, then I'm all for it.
All right. Anybody else? So we have a motion from Councilman Citro, a second from Councilman Miranda.
May I, may I, I wanna make sure that we don't, that, that we pass first reading and the second read delayed for six weeks, so that this administration, and if this is not happening, then we don't do it in six weeks. Administration, uh, takes it and digests it and sends out in the water bill, that item, uh, to it. And furthermore, when we had a water shortage, believe me, we, we had a dire need, and guess what? The media and the council and the administration got together, and you know what? It lowered it by about twenty million gallons a day average, because we knew, and everybody got the message through the media, and everybody got the message through whatever sources we did. I'm not opposed to sending messages to anyone, at all, at any time, but if they send this in the mail, what more evidence do you need that they've been told? I'm trying to take all the, the possibilities that somebody can say, I didn't know, I'm sorry, we sent it out in the water bill, we sent it out here, we did this, send it to the homeowners association, send it out to all the media. The media would print it, because it's something different, something that gotta do, we're cleaning up the environment, and I believe that the media will do it.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilman Citro, a second from Councilman Miranda, with clarification of a six-week delay in coming back, so the administration can digest.
They put that date, I don't have. March nineteenth.
All right. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Since Ms. Kurt is here.
Chair pro tem. Motion carried, with the year being absent, and the second reading and adoption will be held on March nineteenth, twenty twenty, at nine thirty AM.
Thank you very much.
Since Ms. Kurt is here, can we go to eighty-one, and that gets you out of here for the day later? No?
I'm here, you know, I'm here till the end.
Oh, okay. Well, never mind.
To the end, is there an end coming?
So, number eighty-three, we, um, we continued that to February twentieth, we won't, not discussing that. So we go to item number eighty-four, and we have someone here to discuss the underground utility ordinance.
Good afternoon, Justin Vaskey, Assistant City Attorney. I'm here for item eighty-four on the agenda. Uh, pursuant to a City Council motion from October third, uh, twenty nineteen, now is requested to appear before you today to provide a report regarding the creation of an underground utility ordinance similar to the county's. In order to get a complete understanding of the issues involved with the county's underground utility ordinance, I have spoken with county staff, city staff, and researched the relevant laws. In my research, I discovered that there are many issues involved with the implementation of this ordinance, and that, that must be addressed before the final version of the ordinance is presented to City Council. For instance, based on the county's experience, I, I learned that the county project manager tasked with the inflammation, implementation of the project would likely spend at least twenty-five percent of his or her time on the project. Two, uh, there may be a significant fiscal impact to the city's budget, as there's a risk that the city will have to pay for an engineering study that won't be reimbursed through the special assessment. This amount should be addressed in future city budgets, as there is not sufficient funds in the current city budget for that. Also, it is important that we make the public aware that the residents of the impacted neighborhoods will have to pay to have their cable and fiber optic cables moved, as their relocation would not be part of the special assessment. And finally, there may be impacts to the city's tree canopy, as the undergrounding of electrical lines may impact the root system of the trees in the impacted areas. I have a working draft of the ordinance, and I am currently coordinating additional meetings with city staff to discuss these and other issues involved with this ordinance. And I respectfully request that I be allowed to return in two months to update City Council on the status of the ordinance.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with, with coming back in, in two months. The, John Bennett was, was standing here, you know, a half hour ago, and we're talking about resiliency. I mean, this is a, this is a very critical issue of resiliency. If anything, you know, we have, you know, we have potential storm surge, and we have potential high winds, and, uh, and this could address, you know, potentially address both. I think a storm surge a little harder, but, uh, I understand the technology is there now to, to make these underground power lines, uh, more resilient to saltwater. But, I appreciate, um, your caution. As a lawyer, we're trained to be cautious and to give all the issues, and that's what you've done. But at the same time, if we're so cautious that we, we don't make any progress, then, then we're, then we're nowhere. So the city has never given neighborhoods an opportunity to underground the power lines. The county has, one of the neighborhoods has taken advantage of it. I don't know where they are in terms of construction or anything like that, but at least, at least they're trying. Maybe there's a neighborhood out there like Davis Island, or some other neighborhood that's excited about it and, and is willing to move forward. But all this ordinance does is say, okay, we're gonna give you an opportunity to do that. Ultimately, if a community like Davis Island or somewhere else came in and said, yes, we wanna move forward with that, then we'd figure out, how do we fund that quarter position? Okay? And some of the other issues that you addressed. And also, where are the trees, and how do the, how many trees will get affected, and that sort of thing? Trees get affected a lot with the overhead power lines, because TICO comes along with their state statute, and they butcher them. Uh, we can argue about that for a few hours, but we won't. But the bottom line is, is there's a lot of reasons we could come up with why we shouldn't do these things, but I believe that this is a really important thing, that we should, that we should say, okay, we'll address those issues down the road, but let's put something on the books to dangle out there like a carrot to these communities and say, if we wanna partner with you to underground your power lines. We can't do it ourselves, we know we can't afford to do it ourselves, but if these individual communities have the wherewithal and the, and the money to do it, then maybe that's a good start. So anyway, come back in, in sixty days, but I hope we come back with a workable ordinance.
Councilman Moran.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your comments, I, I really appreciate. Uh, what happens if a substation goes under? Doesn't work, substation's hit by high winds and a tornado, and you all got underground cable. They're not gonna have any electricity. So there, there's just more than what we're talking about. There's a lot more than what we're talking about. I'm not opposed to that. In fact, I believe that I saw one or two blocks somewhere near the water, and I'll try to find it, this is ten, twelve years ago, when I went there, looked at something, I looked around, there was no cable. And I found out it was all underground. The day themselves, when they built, did it underground. A lot of areas that are being now developed, in the city and in the county, they putting them underground, at the cost to whoever buys that house. So I don't believe the general public should be responsible for any payment of anyone else's undergrounding, but if they themselves want it, I think the county ordinances allows you to do that, with all your costs going to you, and you pay, every, every year, you pay a qualifying amount, two thousand some dollars a year, if I remember reading something like that, towards the cost of doing the undergrounding in front of your yard. I'm not opposed to none of that, and I appreciate what they wanna do, no matter who you are, if you wanna get a loan, if you have the money, that's up to the homeowner. Just if you wanna change the inside of your house, that's up to the homeowner, not me. Government can't do everything for everybody. Sometimes you have to step up to the plate, do it yourself. And if that's the case that they want, I'm all for it, I'm all for it. Go do it. However, it comes with additional costs. What happens if a substation goes under that services a neighborhood? Who's gonna pay for the substation to be underground? I don't know. Or, 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 I, I, John, I'm trying to help, but I don't know, I don't know what happens there.
I don't know if the intent is to put the substations underground. I think the intent is to put the distribution lines.
I, I understand that.
And, and Harbor Island's been underground forever.
That's, that's right.
Downtown's underground.
That's what I'm saying, I've seen it all over. So what I'm, my question that I ask myself, what happens if we have a catastrophe in one of the substations that services that part of the area? Do they still get electricity, just because they're underground? I don't have that answer. I'm not an electrical engineer.
We have a TICO representative.
Well, I don't think you're prepared to answer these questions. What I'm saying is, it's a lot more than somebody wanting something. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
And, 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 and God bless them, I'm glad that they're doing that environment. However, and I'm not an engineer, and I'm not a genius, in fact, I always say I got a one-cell brain, but sometimes that's more than somebody else has. So what I'm trying to say is, if in fact, all those things are factual, I don't know what the cost is, no one's come and told us what the cost is for somebody, I would love to put solar, I would love to have underground my house. I don't know what the costs are, and you could do it block by block. It doesn't have to be a whole complete neighborhood. If the neighborhood, if those ten blocks, those ten houses in the neighborhood, or six houses, or whatever wanna do it, they can do it. I believe we had, uh, three or four months ago, something that has to do with Tepa General. They put their, their, their equipment that produces the energy, second and third floor, and they're gonna pay for all that going under. And they're gonna pay for it going under, if I recall the, the hearing that we had here, and we okayed all that. But it's up to that entity to pay the cost. And I think that what Tepa General did, I'm not sure, 'cause that was some months back. But I remember something happened to that effect, and I applaud them for doing that.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else?
I'll move to defer this item for sixty days and come back with an ordinance.
All right, thank you very much. Um, we will move on to...
Motion is second.
Oh, we have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, we have a second?
I do second.
A second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item eighty-five, Jean Duncan.
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department, I'm here with Ms. Duncan on this item. Uh, the, the request was to appear and provide a report on the transportation concurrency exception areas in South Tampa, and to look at the possibility of revising them. And the reason that I'm up here is that transportation concurrency is governed by state statute, so I was going to, um, before Ms. Duncan got up here, explain the framework that we operated under previously, and the framework, statutory framework that we operate under today. So going back in time, in nineteen eighty-five, the Florida Legislature passed the growth, the first growth, the first real Growth Management Act, which required adequate public facilities to be in place concurrent with development. And for transportation purposes, adequate meant that a certain identified level of service was established and maintained, and you identified that level of service in the comprehensive plan for the roadway networks. What that meant in reality is that if a roadway dropped below our adopted level of service, no development could occur until adequate facilities... no development could occur until adequate facilities were in place. And under the earliest state laws, it could be brought up to being adequate again to meet the level of service either by the developer or by the city, but you had to regain our adopted level of service. The result of that, as after that was in place for a while, was that development moved to where there was capacity on the roadways. So you saw a lot of development out in the unincorporated area and less development within your urban cores. That was a concern for the legislature. So in the nineties, they provided an opportunity for urban environments to create something called a transportation concurrency exception area in hopes to encourage urban infill. The city of Tampa did that, and so basically, everything south of Fowler became a transportation concurrency exception area. So the question now to the second part of the motion is, what would it look like today if the city got rid of the transportation concurrency exception area and again, established a level of service for concurrency purposes? Well, we have a level of service, but required concurrency in South Tampa. And an important thing to understand is that the state laws changed. It's not as it was in nineteen eighty-five. The first change that the state did was that, as opposed to stopping all development if we drop below our allowable level of service, they allowed a developer to pay what is called a proportionate fair share. The state said you can no longer stop development if our level of service drops if the developer is paying its proportionate fair share. That is, they had to identify a project that was financially feasible, a real project that would be built in the near future, either on the city's CIP or otherwise determined to be financially feasible. But the developer was only required to pay their fine their proportionate fair share, the impact that they did. So the hope was that if you had a number of developers in a particular area, you would eventually get enough money, along with whatever the city was putting into it, to eventually build this project before the development could go forward. That has changed. In the two thousands, several amendments to the Growth Management Act went into place. And now, even in areas where you have concurrency, the law is very, very different. Number one, the project that they identify is no longer required to be financially feasible or to be in the CIP at all. They just pick a project. Doesn't have to be fully funded in the near future. The other thing that's important to know is the applicant can't be responsible for reducing or eliminating any existing deficiencies. So whatever project it is, it no longer has to bring you up to your adopted level of service. It just has to address the impact of the of the development that's coming forward. So even if you were to have concurrency in place, it is not the tool that it was back in the eighties, when it was initially thought of. So I thought it was important for city council, as you're wrestling with what tools you want to implement, to understand concurrency, because I know people talk about it a lot, and people have come down and had concerns about the fact that we have this transportation concurrency exception area. But I think people need to be aware of the fact that concurrency is a very different, it's a very different legal entity than it was back in the eighties when it was introduced. I'm now going to turn it over to Ms. Duncan if you have any additional questions, or I'm available if there are any legal questions.
Are there any questions, Councilman Dingfelder?
I'd like to hear Ms. Duncan's perspective on it and then I do.
Yes, Jean Duncan, Transportation and Stormwater Services. If you don't mind, I'd like to provide two graphics to each of you. For me, a picture's worth a thousand words. I think if you see these two graphics, you'll understand some of what Ms. Kurt was explaining to you. And I think my information can then be very brief in answer to any questions. So I'll start with the first graphic, and I'll give you a chance to let those get passed So basically, what I'd like to share with you is how the TCEA, Transportation Concurrent Exception Area Protocol Process calculations that are done, which are done by our Planning and Development Department. This is how this is the general approach that's taken. If you see the circled areas, when we modified our TCEA a few years ago to go from transportation impact fees to multimodal fees, we revisited the TCEA that we had in place, and we made some adjustments to that. And the focus is, and still it was and still is, that we want to encourage growth in certain parts of our city and have denser areas within our city and have residential areas within our city. We want people to have choices, be either living in a more urban environment, in a condo or apartment, or living in a suburb with a home and a yard, or as they go out more towards the county, having a more rural experience. So the circled areas are the areas where we have the most, the least onerous type of calculation for multimodal fees, because we want the growth to be focused in those circled areas. And you can see a listing there of what's in those circled areas. The second graphic I have is basically outlining the growth strategy of this transportation concurrency exception area. The lines on the map are basically representing a complement to the circles I just showed you. So besides encouraging growth in the downtown, we want to encourage growth in our business centers like USF and Westshore. We want to have protections in place for our neighborhoods as we're calculating what these fees should be for the developments. And then, of course, we want to have mixed-use transit-oriented developments, TOD, along our transit corridors, which up till now have been mainly the streetcar and bus routes, such as Florida Avenue, Kennedy Boulevard, that have a frequency and a solid ridership and a very robust bus system. So these two pictures basically are telling you, here's how we approach determining the fees that people pay for transportation in the city. And this particular tool is really not going to solve on its own a congestion issue that people are feeling is creeping into their neighborhoods. The big picture of where this resides is under our comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan for city of Tampa dictates the land use that is allowed on properties throughout the city, and those property owners have certain rights to development, to develop their property to the highest and best use. So as much as we play with the TCEA, so to speak, it's really not going to address that bigger property ownership issue that's set out in the comprehensive plan. The other thing I'll just mention is that the fees that were being are being charged for our transportation multimodal fees have not been increased in over thirty years. So when a business is choosing to come to Tampa, that part of their their decision equation is very small, and is most likely not really even a factor of their choice of where they want to be in the city. There's other things going on that they're making their decision on, and not multimodal fees that are created by our TCEA that's way down on their list of concerns. So I hope that gets a little more framework to this particular aspect of transportation, complementing what Ms. Kurt had to say. And again, I know we've got limited time this morning, but we're happy to continue the conversation of what can we do to look at protections of our neighborhoods as development concerns are brought to us, to all of us, by our residents.
Councilman Dingfelder.
I'll defer to anybody else who wants to chime in first.
Anybody else? No?
Okay. So this came up, one of our, one of our late evening zoning hearings. I'm sure you were home watching every second.
Absolutely.
Anyway, but in all seriousness, what happened was, and I won't describe the project at all, because that wouldn't be fair, except to say that there were several hundred units involved. It was, let's say, south of Kennedy and on the peninsula. And and the and the neighbors were concerned about traffic. And and so I asked one of your, one of your folks who attends, I said, you know, what sort of contributions will they be making to alleviate some of the immediate traffic concerns along the boulevard that they wanted to build near and/or the intersection, large intersection, that they were also building near? And I can't remember the exact number, that they were building a couple of hundred units, or they were proposing a couple of hundred units. And the contribution was something ridiculously pitiful, like, I don't know, if anybody remembers, like fifteen thousand dollars or something like that for three hundred, three hundred units, which by my calculation is about five hundred.
Counsel, I don't, I apologize for interrupting, but to the extent this may be addressing a particular rezoning.
Well, that's why I've dodged the rate. Well, that's why I've dodged it.
Yeah, let's talk in more generalities and not specifics.
Well, that's as far as I'll go. But anyway, my point is, is the is the per-unit amount was very, very nominal, almost embarrassing. Maybe that relates to the fact that it hasn't been adjusted for thirty years. I don't know what the appropriate mechanism is to to bump that up, but I I see two potential goals. Number one is, and I think this is a mantra that's been said from this body, as well as in the community at large, that new development should pay its fair share. I'm not saying they need new development should be fixing all the old problems. That's not fair either. So I actually agree with the legislature on that. But they should be paying their fair share of what that that new impact is going to be. And when I heard that number pop up, you know, five hundred dollars or something for each unit, when you're going to turn around and sell those units for anywhere from two to three, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, even if they're rental units, I heard rental unit go the other day for four hundred thousand dollars per rental unit. So anyways, so somebody's making a lot of money, and they're not really contributing their fair share to help us, just a smidgen, help us alleviate some of these traffic concerns. So so with that, and the other part is good planning. And 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 I've started on this effort in my mind, and anybody who will listen, that we should create an extremely intensive growth zone that stretches from Ebor City through Channel Side into downtown, to the University District, to Midtown, and to the airport in Westshore. And that in that zone, I believe we could accommodate an additional five hundred thousand people. And when we do that, when we do that over the next twenty, thirty years or whatever, because those people are coming anyway, but when we create that type of, that's the future downtown. The future downtown, somebody flies into Tampa, and they say, where's downtown? And you go, that's downtown. It stretches from Ebor City all the way in a, in a ten-block, twenty-block swath, all the way to the airport in Westshore. That's the future downtown. And when we have that type of density, that's when mass transit and BRTs and everything else is going to work best. I know I'm preaching to the choir on that, but we have to address it in the comp plan. We have to address it on our future land use maps. And I also believe hand in hand with that, we have to take the intensity down in some of the other neighborhoods that don't want that density. Okay? So we need to adjust our future land use maps in some of those other areas, in the peninsula, in, you know, other areas that are traditionally single-family neighborhoods. And they don't want that density, and they don't need that density, and frankly, the density doesn't accomplish anything. So it's a long-winded, long-winded way of saying, this is, this is why this issue came up. And I hope over the next year that we really go into it hard to address those two goals. How do we raise some additional money? And and what do we do to really let government lead the way in terms of saying, this is where the development's going to go? As much as I love developers and, you know, there are many of them, and my friends, and yada, 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 okay? Even Steve McElhenney, who was back there a minute ago. But but it's like, the developer, the time has come for us to be mature as a city and as a government to say, we're going to now direct up growth, and we're going to put it in the right places, instead of vice versa, and let the developers just continue to say, oh, I've got some property all the way down here in X, Y, Z, even though it might create a problem traffic-wise, hurricane evacuation, et cetera, et cetera. You know, I happen to have an option on that land, and I think it's a good idea. No, let's mature up, and let's do it the other way around.
Thank you.
There's my soapbox.
Excuse me. Excuse me, counsel.
All right. Any other questions?
Are we allowed to take public comment?
No.
No. Okay, sorry.
We don't take all the comment on staff reports.
All right. Ms. Kurt, you, I think when we talked on the phone, you said you were looking at alternatives to this.
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. I mean, the city has been investigating, you know, a number of different paths, both through the land planning and through the transportation planning aspects of it, but it's a, it's a bigger conversation than the five-minute staff report on the TCEA. If city council was interested in delving into both of these topics or either of these topics, I think it'd be appropriate to schedule it for a workshop with Transportation and the Planning Commission, and I would also defer to Ms. Duncan, since she will be here, and I won't to add to anything on on that. I don't mean to volunteer other people's time, but we we did discuss that there are, these are very big topics, and that they warrant some in-depth discussion.
So we have a, we have a workshop scheduled to talk about south of Gandy, but this is a larger transportation and planning issue. What's your, what's your advice? Do you recommend something?
I can look at that motion more closely, but that's probably a microcosm of this same issue elsewhere within our city. So we could put some generalities on that motion when we come in to some of the.
Would you recommend doing a workshop just to, how would you describe the workshop?
And is the south of Gandy a workshop, if you don't mind me asking?
I think so, yeah. But that, but let's set that aside, because as you said, that's just a piece of it. So, well, Ms. Kurt, what would you, we have to get your advice before you leave.
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. Well, I was going to suggest, you know, with the south of Gandy, we do have some litigation on that particular area, but it doesn't seem like the issues are just south of Gandy. We're talking about in many areas of the city, particularly in South Tampa. So I was, I'm not sure exactly when that one is scheduled, and if that would give enough time for Ms. Duncan to prepare, but I think, you know, if considering how much time you would like to prepare, and maybe you can make some suggestions, but I was also include the Planning Commission in that, that.
So what would you, what would you call this new workshop?
I guess it could be a, a growth management conversation, something along those lines.
Can we make a motion to set up a workshop now? Or are you at the way to the end?
We, we're busy on workshops until June, unless you want to add it on to one of the other days. May's not very heavy. April's not too bad. I don't know. It's up to you.
So if I could, I'd like to make a motion to hold a growth management workshop in Ju, what date, in June?
June is June eighteenth.
June eighteenth to have.
You want a time certain? There's nine-thirty or ten, well, there's, let's say ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
At least offshore of the month, and then there's Sulfur Springs.
And then to have, what, legal, planning, transportation? Anybody else?
And Ms. Kurt was suggesting the Planning Commission.
And the Planning Commission.
Yes.
Present.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Carlson. Do we have a second?
Can I, can I make a suggestion, just to, just so that the people that are appearing are properly prepared, is maybe be more specific about the issues? I mean, it's, what I heard was, you want to address the possibility of revisiting the multimodal fees. And also the land use plan classifications throughout the city in order to possibly redirect growth, I think, was what.
Yeah, how do, I think it, I'll try to, I'll try to summarize it, and you can correct me, but it's, it's how to plan areas of growth and protect areas that don't want growth.
I'll state it.
All right.
You said it in ten seconds. I took five minutes.
Councilmember Carlson has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. And I just wanted to chime in and remind everybody that the county commissioners have asked us to join them in March, is it? To talk about these issues, even in a bigger picture. You know, county-wide. But but this, this is right on point with that, too, because a lot of the commissioners are worried about sprawl. They want us to take some of that growth and concentrate it in the appropriate corridor. So this can, this, I'm great with the motion, and I think we had to continue our own discussion, but this discussion will come up in that county meeting as well.
All right. Motion from Councilman Carlson, second from Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Next up, items eighty-six and eighty-seven, Tom Snelling. And before, and before you begin, Ms. Zelman, I know you have number ninety. Can we keep that till the end? Because we have a bunch of people waiting, you know, we have a lot to get covered. All right. Take it away.
Okay. Good afternoon, Councilor Tom Snelling, Planning and Development. The item number eighty-six was about the Davis Island. I did send in a memo on that. I do have a little bit more to discuss on that. The, you had asked about some of the timeframes and the cost. The timeframe for a true form-based code, as you know, it's a, it's a much more in-depth type of. The, um, the timeframe for a, uh, a true form-based code, uh, as you know, it's, it's a much more in-depth type of analysis. It involves, uh, comprehensive land use changes, creating a vision. And then after those are done, uh, you, you come back in and you start to address some of the more detailed land development regulations and, and the zoning issues. The other thing that form-based codes do allow it, they do actually allow for some potential zoning changes, expanding of commercial areas or reduction of commercial areas, depending on the, the direction that the, um, overall workshop and, and discussion takes you. The, um, uh, the form-based code, um, typically will take, uh, you know, um, between a hundred and hundred, a hundred and a hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, with a consultant. Our staffs are, we, we simply don't have the resources to undertake that in-house, as we did in, in Seminole Heights several years back. And, um, you know, the consultant work would probably be twelve to eighteen months, and then the overall timeframe to get the entire project through the, uh, uh, just, or, uh, adoption is closer to twenty-four to thirty-six months. In reality, we know that very certainly, uh, cer-, with certainty, because that's how long Seminole Heights took. It took a little bit over three years to go from the very first discussions and the neighborhood groups, because it involves a great deal of, um, public input. We, we spent several dozens of times in the community, um, going over that. So that's what, what a form-based code on Davis Island would do. A simple overlay district, it's a shorter time period, it's eighteen, twenty-four months. But the money, and it, it's a little bit less money, it's between a hundred and a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. But again, we don't have the resources. That money is not budgeted in the twenty-twenty budget for my department. Um, so I don't, I don't have the cash or the resources. But those are the timeframes and the costs of what'd be involved in either a, a form-based code on Davis Island or, uh, just going through with an overlay district. Overlay districts don't change the zoning. It doesn't allow any increases in any, uh, uh, particular uses that may, that the neighborhood or the community may want to consider. It addresses more dimensional aspects, if you will, it addresses other things. But, um, like the South Howard Overlay District, for example, calls out some percentage of fenestration that must be in front of the buildings on the facade. It calls out that they want the setbacks to be, uh, maximum setbacks versus, you know, putting them on things pushed to the street. But again, those are dimensional requirements, they're not really changing or addressing any of the particular use, uh, or entitlement requirements. Any questions?
Any questions, Councilman Dingfelder?
Yeah, um, I, you know, I, with all due respect to the, the Davis Island folks who've been coming and asking about, you know, these planning issues, I'm not, um, I'm not completely convinced that form-based code is the way to go, or even overlay district is the way to go. But we haven't had a lot of Davis Island issues, rezonings, since, since I came back last summer. And we've had, say, three or four, and, and, you know, often they are contentious. Um, but I think what I'm really hearing from the folks on Davis Island is that nobody's going out there and talking to them and saying, what can we do to address some of these conflicts? You know, no, nobody likes conflicts. The, the developers come in, don't like the conflicts, the neighborhoods come in, they don't, they got better things to do than sit here all night. Tom, you don't like them, we don't like them. So what my hope is, is maybe we can send an existing planner out there to go out and have some two or three meetings, long meetings with the neighborhood, to find out what their real goal is, um, and, and where these conflicts arise mostly. You know, some of them are, are, you know, the McMansions that are rising up because they've got some wonderful waterfront, and FEMA is pushing them up, okay? And, and I don't know if we can do much about those. But then maybe some other things, when it comes to some of the density issues along the major corridors through Davis Island, you know, and that's another, that's another area we had some conflict last fall. You know, maybe we can tweak, maybe we can tweak this a little bit with a little less manpower, woman power.
I mean, tuning in on exactly the kinds of things that they're looking for, I guess, is what you're saying.
Yeah, and really, really, um, try and, and be, let's try and be, again, proactive and, and, and reach out to them, and send some staff out there, and have some meetings, and maybe there's some simple, simple little tweaks, we can come back instead of an expensive, you know, three-year program.
All right, and the same applies for, um, West Shore Palms?
Virtually identical, I could've just quickly interjected both of those comments.
All right, any motions, any other discussion? No?
No, I, I, it's not even a motion, I'll just urge, urge staff to, uh, to, to be proactive in both of those neighborhoods, and let's see what we can do to, to address those planning issues.
Understood, Counsel.
I mean, should we at some point, should we at some point set up a workshop, like we've done with the last item in, in...
Revisit, revisit it, so it has a, yeah, I think that's a good idea, maybe six months from now or something.
I was gonna suggest something like that, because if, if indeed we are gonna try to communicate with the neighborhoods, schedules are so insane, wacko, um, I would like a little bit of time, a little bit of flexibility, if you will.
Six months would be, uh, August twenty-seventh's workshop, and there's nothing on that, if you wanna set a workshop for that?
I think that's a good idea for both of those neighborhoods.
All right, uh, who wants to make that motion?
Um, I'll make a motion that we set up a, uh, workshop on, what date was it?
August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, nine AM.
Twenty-seventh, nine AM, twenty-seventh?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-seventh, nine AM, to discuss, um, planning in Davis Island.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson, do we have a second? Second from Councilman Dingfelder, all in favor?
Aye.
I think you wanted to make one for West Shore Palms as well, is that correct?
And that's including West Shore Palms.
Oh, including West Shore Palms, including West Shore Palms.
So that motion includes both, for August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, nine AM. Councilman Miranda?
I just wanted to make a comment, too, upon, on what's happening all over the city. Not only in these areas that we just mentioned, but i- if you go down, if you're coming west in the morning on MLK, all the way from Fifteenth Street this way, you'll be surprised how long it's gonna take you to get to, uh, MLK and Del Mayberry. Just be surprised. And if you take it reverse at three-thirty to four-thirty, heading east, you will be surprised how long it'll take you to get to Fifteenth Street. 'Cause I've done both of them.
I don't go that way at all.
And it's not funny, and it's not, and, and people get exasperated, because they're already frustrated with other things in life, not with the government, but they get on the government because traffic ain't moving. And if there's an accident on that road, you must well sell the car. You can get it where you're going walking quicker. So it's just not in those areas, it's throughout the city. And, uh, I can tell you that land is going up so high, I remember five, six years ago, you buy a lot in West Tampa for twenty thousand dollars. Go to St. Conrad and Lincoln, there's a lot for sale for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And it ain't a double lot, single lot. So the land value in West Tampa now is a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, a lot. That's the problem. Why? People are coming in, and the people who live here, who went out to school, are coming back because they have job opportunities. So in prosperity, we create our own problems. That's how life is. And, and your division, sir, you've had a couple of people retire two or three years ago, and now you had a couple today, and guess what? I'm just gonna make a motion today, that sometime in March, Kathy Beck's retiring.
Everybody's leaving.
Everybody except the councilman and the mayor, we're gonna work long, long hours. But what I'm trying to tell you is that this is the penalty that's gotta be solved. Because what's coming, from what I know about water, is an increase of a lot of people, like forty percent increase in the next twenty-five years. So where are you gonna put them? That's the question you gotta ask yourself. The only areas that they have, buy all the land you can in East Tampa, 'cause it's coming.
And, and that's not even cheap.
And not even cheap, I know that.
Well, you don't believe it is.
No, so what I'm saying is, buy the land you can, if you can afford it, 'cause you're gonna bail it in the stock market. You don't have to worry about the trade with China or anything else, only about what the lot's gonna bring you. Because it's gonna double. So that's all I'm gonna say.
You know why the traffic is bad on MLK? The timing of the lights with the interstate, and Central at MLK, Nebraska at MLK, and then there's no dedicated bus lane, so the bus holds up the traffic instead of pulling off to the curb, 'cause I, I deal with it every single day. Anyways, we have a motion from...
I live three blocks north of MLK, off North Boulevard, I feel your pain.
And then you have all the cut-through traffic there and the people speeding, 'cause I get those phone calls.
Yeah.
It never ends. Councilman Carlson has a motion with the second from Councilman Dingfelder, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
Counsel, thank you.
Item number eighty-eight. Are you Michael?
Kevin Henneka, Contract Administration, uh, here for, um, Michael.
Okay.
And, um, regarding item eighty-eight, uh, a response has been provided from the department through the administration to the council. And so I'm here if there's any additional questions regarding their response recommendation.
Any questions, Councilman Good?
Is there any plans in the future to make any hires in that, in that, any plans in the future to hire anybody in, in that division? For the loss, because, you know, time and time I, again, I, you know, I hear, I hear this all the time, where in-house, the citizens saying, wow, why are you spending this kind of money? Don't you have people in-house that can do this kind of work in the city? Doesn't the city have, have architects and designers and any type of thing? So, I mean, I have to ask that question, because I, I don't know myself. I don't, I don't, never worked in that division, never had any dealings with that. So that's why this came up, to ask that question in reference to, uh, the, the tremendous amount of outsourcing that's being done. So I, I, I don't know if you can really answer those questions, they, they sent you as a feeling because it was a response in the book, but, uh, still, I just wondered, is, is, is there any, gonna be any future hiring in that department that maybe help with some of these issues, to maybe lower our cost of, we have in-house people?
We are currently, um, uh, we've got, uh, for, uh, there are two of the three architectural positions that are vacant right now that we are looking to hire for. Um, and, uh, but our recommendation is that we continue to outsource, uh, for full service and architectural services, uh, to ensure that small and local minority-owned architectural firms have the opportunity to perform, uh, city and Tampa-full service designs and architectural services. Uh, reason being for that is, um, uh, with the amount of work that we have, uh, we would have to hire quite a few more people to, to do work in-house. And, um, it would be a matter of, uh, trying to anticipate what the workload would be in the future. And the, the, to do work in-house would be much more significant, uh, than the coordination that we're doing right now.
Councilman Dingfelder?
So you, you bring up a couple of, uh, questions as a follow-up to your statements. Is, how, how long have those positions been vacant?
Um, uh, they were, um, uh, just recently, uh, we had, uh, one leave and then one, uh, returned back to their, uh, previous position within the city. And so we had, uh, opened up the advertising, um, a few weeks ago.
And what, what's the market like? I know six, seven years ago, you could pick up a dozen architects for nothing. Um, you know, just because it was a rough time for architects, I shouldn't say that lightly. Uh, had a lot of friends who were suffering during that period of time. But, um, you know, what, 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 what's it like now out there in terms of finding architects and paying them what we're paying?
I'm assuming that it's pretty good out there right now, based upon the responses that we're getting.
Yeah. Um, and you brought up, uh, MBE and SBE opportunities, which we're all sensitive to in a, in a variety of the contexts. Um, do you have any sense of how, how does that department do in terms of, uh, using SBEs and, and, and WMEs?
It's our number-one priority.
Well, that's good, but put a number, do you have a number on it?
On the, the amount of, um, there is, I would say about a handful out of the dozen that are available.
No, I guess, and maybe Mr. Spearmann can help, I don't know, but, but, uh, what I'm, what I'm looking for is a percentage of the total amount of work that you outsource to architecture firms. You brought up the op-, the opportunity to use SBE and WME. Do you have a percentage that we are successful right now, out of that, you know, uh, a hundred projects or a hun- or ten million dollars, or whatever, whatever number you wanna use? What percentage we, we currently are, get participation from WME and SBE of architects?
Yes, I could find that, I'll get back with you on that.
That'd be great.
All right, any other questions?
So you'll, you'll send a memo back to us on that?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
I think that's key. If we're saying that we're outsourcing so much in these, whatever the market rate is out there, or these costs that we're paying to outsource, and who, who, who's getting the jobs? Who, who's the group that's getting the jobs? So I think you brought up a good point, and I always tap, tip my hat to you, uh, that, that's a good point. Are, are, are we putting this out to everybody? Is everybody getting an opportunity at the park? And maybe those, that, that, those high numbers could come down a little bit, and when people tell us that, you know, uh, we had to outsource, and it was outsourced for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? We had to outsource for architecture design, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? A two-hundred thousand dollars? What, what percentage was that? So I, I think it's a good question, get back to us on the overall, uh, distribution of funds that are going out for architecture design work, and who's getting those jobs? And that we'll know where, where, where we're at, 'cause that's, I think that's a key component here. So if you can get that back to us, that'd be great.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, thank you very much, sir. Now, let's, uh, we're gonna keep number ninety till the end. Uh, let's go to number seventy-nine, eighty and eighty-one, and try to move quickly through those. Mr. Spearmann is here, if there's any questions on seventy-nine and eighty, they're both large, uh, large numbers, seventy-nine and eighty.
Morning, Counsel, uh, I'm here to address any questions with regard to item number seventy-nine and eighty, and I wanna thank you for approving item number thirty early today with the companion, uh, resolution for jaw, jaw about a contract and for the water meter replacements. Uh, seventy-nine is for general construction, and eighty is for site civil.
Any questions?
Are, are any of these WMEs?
Yes, they are, um, Councilman, uh, Dingfelder. In fact, uh, on the, um, general construction, uh, Commercial Interiors is a certified City of Tampa WBE. And on the, uh, Silver Site, Austin Construction Group, Inc., is a certified small local business enterprise.
Great. Do we have a motion to, uh, move item number...
Move the resolution for seventy-nine.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Miranda, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item number eighty.
Move resolution for eighty.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
Pass with one aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, number eighty-one, Ms. Kurt?
Thank you, Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. I am here on item eighty-one, dealing with un-motorized vehicles and larger motorized vehicles. The motion was to bring back an ordinance for first reading, um, dealing with the un-motorized vehicles, parking on city streets, we've discussed that twice already. Um, and also to add a provision in regarding the larger motorized vehicles on public streets, and to, um, also include language regarding the possibility of a warning being issued. So I have provided to you an ordinance for first reading consideration, dealing with those three items. First, with the non-motorized vehicles, which are your trailers and, and your boats, parking on city streets. As we discussed last time, I changed it to be on all city streets that the city has jurisdiction over. So in, in short, there's no parking of those vehicles on any streets that the city has jurisdiction over. Um, the second portion of it was a discussion, the motion read, with the larger motorized vehicles, there was a discussion particularly regarding RVs, which are motorized, so they would not fit into the first section that we talked about, which is non-motorized vehicles. And as I, um, pointed out to you last time, your code currently prohibited parking trucks over eighty inches on certain streets, and the certain streets are your, um, resident, are your streets adjacent to your residential areas. I modified that to include parking motor vehicles. Motor vehicles, as defined by the state, is anything moving people or goods, and that includes the recreational vehicles. So that is prohibiting any of the large motor vehicles over eighty inches on streets that are adjacent to your residential areas. Um, I did include a warning section, as was requested. It basically says that a written warning will be provided prior to the issuance of a ticket. After twelve hours, if the vehicle is still parked in any prohibited location, a ticket may be issued. I said in any prohibited location, because you have the instance where someone's warned, and then they just moved down the street. So I said in any prohibited location. Um, and then the other change that I made was, for the non-motorized vehicle, you already had the ability to impound... had the ability to impound and, and/or tow if after they received the ticket, they still had not moved their vehicle. And I added that into your larger motorized vehicles as well. I did want to provide you with some informal feedback that I had from the people that I work with in our enforcement area. And they did express some level of concern that requiring a warning in these situations where most of the time, if it's not in downtown, it's TPD that's going to be enforcing the parking regulations. And that requiring them to issue a written warning, the standard operating procedure for something similar, which is the inoperable vehicles where they post a sticker, requires the officer to go at the end of his shift to verify if the vehicle's still there or at the beginning of his next shift. And that that may be, it, it, it's an intensive use of an officer's time for a motor vehicle violation, a parking violation, to have to go back twelve hours later and check it twice before they can issue a twenty-nine-dollar ticket. But again, as I discussed with our enforcement section, that's a policy decision. I did tell them that I would relay that concern to you, but at the end of the day, it is, it's a policy decision for City Council, and they will do their best to enforce it as it is written. It's just an obstacle to, to getting to enforcement. But it is available for first reading. If you did have concerns about the warning and wanted it removed, you could still have first reading today, and we could remove it between first and second reading. But again, that's totally at the discretion of council.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Councilman Miranda?
Just to make a reference point, Mr. Chairman. I, I've seen semis, tractor and trailer, parked with no parking signs. On the streets, there's no parking. They park the semi, they put a little cone in the back of it, and code enforcement comes, gives them a warning. I found out about this. Then I, going back, I went to check out that location myself. Guess where the semi was? The fellow had the gall to park it in his front lawn, all of it. Now, that's how they are. Not all of them, but in this one case, he said, okay, I can't park it here. So he parked it in the front of his house. Now, that's still a violation. But I tell myself, I don't understand where they want to go. And when you come in, believe it or not, MLK, west of Dale Mayberry, is a corridor that's used more and more and more people coming off the airport, coming around, coming through, taking cargo road and making a left in MLK. And that road until lately, that the code enforcement clamped down, was a haven for semis parked on either side of the street. And they've done a fantastic job in cleaning it out. You know where they're parking it now? On the side streets. So they knew for one thing, and they move it to another spot. I see them every day when I come home from work. So I'm not telling you it's there every day, but I see it when I come to work there. So there's got to be a way that, that this is just settled. In fact, I remember fifteen, twenty years ago, we asked everybody in the city that has a vehicle driving to report when they see a violation. Not too many have ever happened. They rely on code enforcement. And code enforcement is doing the best they can. Code enforcement has to spend one weekend, uno, a month, working. And I show you with the difference that you're going to find. You're going to find lines from here all over, from here to Plant City that have violations. Because the violations occur on weekends, not on Monday through Friday. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Councilman Dingfelder?
In section, looks like fifteen dash eighty-six, it speaks to the, to the warning, and I like that. The only concern I have is, so the officer, if the officer gives a warning and somebody circles back within twelve hours later, if it's still not moved, then the ticket may be issued. That's, that's your language. But then it says, if it's still not moved within another two hours, then it could be immobilized or impounded. Right?
Yes.
Okay. So, so my concern is, you know, playing that out, let's say somebody, you know, somebody le, leaves it there for, for a, a day or two or something like that. Okay, now they get a ticket, and then two hours later, it could get towed, towed away. There's not a whole lot of time, time there to, to address anything. So I think the two hours might be a little, a little harsh, but I don't know. Did you, did you have a chance to think about that one or talk to TPD on that or what?
Councilman Dingfelder, the two hours is existing language.
Right.
And I will also tell you, as with many things on the code, in your codes, there is an allowance to do it within two hours. Impoundment or immobilization is a last resort. It is very labor-intensive for the city to do that. So the likelihood that somebody is, gets a ticket, and then two hours later, we're going, the city's going to be out there with an impoundment or immobilization has probably never happened unless it was a, a repeat offender, it was a very, very serious issue. This gives the city the tool to use it in those situations, but it doesn't mean that they're going to or even that they're likely to for the reasons I just mentioned.
Is that the discretion of the officer or whomever?
What you call a red tag?
And you said this ticket is less, right?
This ticket is twenty-nine dollars unless you're a habitual offender, which is five times in three-hundred-and-sixty-five days, in which case it's a hundred.
Okay. I'm good with that.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Who would like to read this ordinance?
That's eighty-one.
Number eighty-one, yes, sir.
Whatever.
Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, relating to parking boats and non-motor vehicles and vehicles over eighty inches. Making revisions to the City of Tampa Code, ordinances, chapter fifteen, parking, amending section fifteen dash three definitions, amending section fifteen dash forty-seven, parting trucks. Parting or parking? Should that be parting or where'd she go? Parking. Can I say that? Is that okay to amend it while I'm rea? Okay. Parking trucks over eighty inches wide on certain streets prohibited, amending section fifteen dash eighty-six, non-motive vehicle parking prohibited, amending section fifteen dash one-twenty-five, additional penalties in enforcement to include immobilization, impoundment, and use of a collection agency, repealing all ordinance or, or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing effective date.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Second reading and adoption will be held on March fifth, two thousand and twenty, at nine-thirty a.m.
All right.
And I will submit a substitute ordinance, and I apologize for the typo.
No problem. Councilman Carlson?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you. You worked a long time and really hard on this, and you're probably glad that you don't have to finish it. But thank you so much for all the time you put into these two big issues.
Thank you very much. We'll go back to item number sixty-six and start up from there.
Chairman, you're working backwards.
Well, they wanted us, the staff reported for ten-thirty, and they gave me a list, so we completed that. Now it's almost Friday. No, no, number ninety? Oh. Oh, number seventy-eight, and this is for use of the city seal. Any questions from, from council? This is for the Black History Activities.
Sub move.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder with a second from Councilman Miranda to move item number seventy-eight, the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number sixty-six, this is regarding the skateboard ramps. And this is a second reading.
Good afternoon, counsel. Catherine Coyle, Planning and Development. This set of regulation changes to chapter twenty-seven, you transmitted them back on October twenty-fourth to the Planning Commission. They did go to the Planning Commission beginning of January.
We have to open the public hearing.
Chairman, I'd like to move item from public hearing sixty-six through...
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to open the public hearings from Councilman Miranda.
These are judicial, so anybody's going to speak on all, all of you.
Yeah. And second from Councilman Citro. All, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. When we get to the quasi-judicial, we'll do this one. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Sorry. You transmitted them to the Planning Commission October twenty-fourth. The Planning Commission heard them beginning of January. They did recommend approval for the changes that are before you, so they're back for second reading, public hearing today. As Councilman Mance Galco mentioned, the skateboard ramp amendments are here. Those were the council-initiated amendments. There are also a series of cleanup items, chapter twenty-seven, clarifying language related to the districts and footnote to some of the tables. I can go through them if you'd like me to. And then the one that's on the first page is amending the definition of cemetery to bring it in line with the state definition of cemetery. I can rehash them if you'd like me to, or I can just, I'll mail them for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Coyle? Seeing none? All right. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number sixty-six? Do, on a non-judicial?
Oh, this is not?
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. Rod Hatch at ten thirteen East Patterson Street. Just wanted to take the time to express my appreciation to City Council, the City's Legal Department, code enforcement, and the mayor's office for all their assistance with this ordinance. While this ordinance may not help restore the privacy that my wife and I used to have prior to this intrusive structure or the ability to have a quiet and peaceful backyard environment, it will, however, prevent any residents in the future from having to face the same situation that my wife and I are forced to deal with. All residents should be able to enjoy the recreational activity of choice in their own backyard. However, it should never infringe on the peace or privacy of adjacent residents. Many of these ramp structures are built with no consideration for the city's sound ordinance and well-being of their neighbors. This ordinance addresses those items. While we'd all like to believe that all the residents of our city would be respectful of their neighbors, it simply is not the case. I trust you will support this needed ordinance today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Councilman Miranda?
May I ask a question of Legal Department, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't know who wants to answer, but this ordinance is certainly not taking care of the problem, but originated the ordinance being placed. However, if there is a act of God that, that, that structure by fire or wind or whatever is destroyed, does it, has the same thing that you have with houses, that if you have to build more than fifty percent, this ordinance takes precedence then, am I correct? Apparently, nobody wants to hear me.
Catherine Coyle, Planning and Development, it's really a zoning question. Yes, if it is destroyed, then it does have to be rebuilt to the current standard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak on item number sixty-six? All right, can I get a motion to close?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. This was brought up by Councilman Dingfelder. Would you like to go ahead and read this?
Sure. This is the...
Sixty-six.
Second reading, yeah?
Yes, sir.
All right, I move, in regard to twenty-nineteen dash eight, chapter twenty-seven, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, related to skateboard ramps, cemetery definition and general corrections to zoning use, dimensional and parking tables, making revisions to the City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, chapter twenty-seven, zoning and land development, amending section twenty-seven dash forty-three definitions, amending section twenty-seven dash one-fifty-six, official schedule of district regulations, amending section twenty-seven dash one-eighty-four, official schedule of permitted principal, accessory, and special uses, required off-street parking ratios by uses, creating section twenty-seven dash two-ninety dot nine, skateboard ramps, repealing ordinances, or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing effective date.
Do we have a second?
I hope that was the right one.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, record your vote, second reading.
All right, motion carried unanimously with Vera being absent.
Okay. Thank you very much. For the next items, beginning with sixty-seven, if you have not been sworn in, you would have to please, you would have to stand and be sworn in at this time.
Do you some swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth and not anybody?
All right, we'll start with item number sixty-seven on this second reading.
Mary Saminiego, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Item number sixty-seven is REZ nineteen fifty-six. It's a second reading for a plan development that was heard at your January sixteenth reading, hearing, rather. All required changes have been completed and are at the city clerk's office.
All right. Petitioner?
Good afternoon. My name is Oscar Benavies. I guess we, we have filled all the requirements, so we can move forward. I really appreciate the support. If anybody has any questions, I'm, I'd be willing to answer.
Do we have any questions for the petitioner? All right. Anybody in the public wishes to speak on item number sixty-seven? We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Councilman Goode?
Mr. Chairman. File REZ nineteen dash fifty-six, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of three oh-two East Seventh Avenue in Sandy Temple, Florida. More particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification, S-RM twenty-four residential multifamily to P.D. Plan Development, residential multifamily attack, providing effective date.
Do we have a second? Second from Councilman, motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor? Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Vera being absent.
Thank you very much. Item number sixty-eight.
Thank you. Mary...
I have to recruit myself in this, because I manage a trust that has...
Okay, no problem. We'll see you once it, once it's finished.
See you tomorrow.
It's almo, it is almost tomorrow. We're going into a night meeting.
I'll be here tomorrow.
Mary Saminiego, item number sixty-eight is REZ nineteen ninety-seven. Well, this was heard at first reading on January sixteenth. There was a notice issue, so unfortunately, we need to make this hearing today a new first reading. And then we'll have to continue it on, or not continue. Then, after you approve of first reading today, then we'll move it for a new second reading. So there was a noticing issue at the clerk's office for the first reading, so we'll have to make this hearing a new first reading.
We have to restart it. I understand.
Yes.
All right. Any questions?
Does that mean we have to hear all the evidence again, or do we, can we use the old evidence?
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. I had conversations with the applicant about this case. He has not contacted me in the last three days. He's not even here. So I'm...
Do you want to continue this?
I'm confused about that. So at this point, I would recommend that you continue this matter, and we'll get it worked out in the interim. And I apologize about that confusion. I'm, I'm, I hope nothing bad happened. I'm unclear why he's not here.
Okay. Can we get a motion to reschedule this to the next regularly scheduled council meeting? Is that be correct?
Yes.
Two weeks?
Okay, so February twentieth. So we have a motion from Councilman Goode to continue February twentieth, with a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number sixty-nine.
Mary Saminiego, item number sixty-nine is REZ nineteen one zero-three. It's a second reading. All required changes have been made.
All right. Do we have the applicant for item number sixty-nine? If you have anything, sir, please approach the, no? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number sixty-nine? Can we get a motion to close?
Move to close.
Motion to close the public hearing from Councilman Goode. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Councilman Citro, if you would mind reading this.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. File number REZ nineteen dash one oh-three, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance, rezoning property in the general vicinity of twenty-five twenty-two and twenty-nine sixty-six North Dale Mayberry Highway in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification, C-one commercial intensive to P.D. Plan Development, vehicle sale, lease, minor and major vehicle
vehicle sale, lease, minor and major vehicle repairs, retail sales, shoppers' goods warehouse, to PD plan development, vehicle sales and leasing, excuse me, major and minor, uh, vehicle repair, retail sales, shoppers' good, restaurant, warehouse, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Goode, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Miranda being absent at vote and Vera being absent.
Thank you very much, item number-
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Item number seventy, Mary Samaniego, is REZ nineteen one zero four. It's a second reading from your January first first reading. All required changes have been completed. The applicant is present.
All right, applicant, do you have anything to say? Any questions?
I do not.
You do not? Anybody from the public wish to speak on item number seventy? We have motion to close from Councilman Goode, with a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Councilman Carlson, would you mind taking number seventy?
File number REZ nineteen dash one oh four. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. Ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of one seven five two zero Bruce B. Downs Boulevard in the City of Tampa, Florida. More particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification, PDA, plan development, alternative restaurant to PD plan development, retail sales, shoppers' goods, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from, motion from Councilman Carlson, second from Councilman, uh, Goode, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Miranda being absent at vote and Vera absent.
All right, item number seventy-one.
Mary Samaniego, item number seventy-one is REZ nineteen one zero nine, is Euclidian rezoning, and it's ready for second reading.
All right, applicant, please.
I'm Camilla Jo. Hatley. I represent the, uh, property owner and the, um, applicant. The, uh, request for rezoning would, is consistent with the comprehensive plan and furthers, uh, several policies in the comprehensive plan as shown in the staff report. Um, it op- it will, uh, present an opportunity to redevelop underutilized lots and replace obsolete housing stock with modern, safe, sustainable, uh, housing and a workforce, um, for workforce occupancy. So we request that the City Council, um, approve the rezoning.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number seventy-one? We have a motion to close from Councilman Goode, with a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Councilman Goode's. I'm sorry, Councilman Dingfelter.
Is that me wrong?
Yes, sir.
In regard to file REZ nineteen dash one zero nine, uh, I'll move the following ordinance presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of third nine oh five, third nine oh nine, and third nine eleven East Fifteenth Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida. More particularly described in section one, from zoning this classification, RM sixteen residential multifamily to RM twenty-four residential multifamily, providing an effective date. And the only comment I'd like to add on to that, and as much as I admire the, the very, very brilliant and ethical attorney who made this presentation, when we, when we're approving a Euclidian zoning, there are no guarantees in regard to what's gonna go there, other than the product that can fit in an RM twenty-four. So while I believe her completely that her client desires to build workforce housing, and I'm sure that's gonna happen, I just wanted to clarify for the record that if it's not a PD or otherwise conditioned, that there are no guarantees.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelter with a second from Councilman Citro, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Vera being absent.
All right, item number seventy-two.
Barbara Lynch, Land Development Coordination, I'm here to answer any questions and the applicant-
Any questions? No, and, uh-
You're not retiring, are you?
Yeah, don't retire.
It's not allowed. We're, we're not accepting any more resignations.
Yeah, we're gonna have a moratorium.
Truett Gardner, four hundred North Ashly Drive, uh, here on items seventy-two and seventy-three, which we opened together before. Um, revisions have been made to the site plan. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Gardner? Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number seventy-two? We have motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Councilman Goode, if you wouldn't mind taking this?
Can I ask a clarification before-
Sure.
Before he moves these two, um, Ms. Elman, in regard to seventy-three, I see a lot of the language of the original motion was in, is included and bold there, uh, on our, on our, um, agenda. Does, does legal feel it's, it's necessary to include any of that language for second reading, or was it adequate just to include it in first reading? Or, Ms. Kurt?
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. While I'm still here, um, we have been handling it at first reading and, and have found that that is sufficient for purposes of meeting the statute that requires you to make bindings a fact.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Did, you, you already read it?
No.
Oh, okay, Councilman, Councilman Goode, go ahead and read seventy-two.
It was chairman, file VAC nineteen twenty-seven. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance vacating, closing, and discontinuing and abandoning portions of, of right-of-way known as Carmen Street, lying south of Cav Street, north of North B Street, east of Gilchrist Avenue, and west of CXX Transportation Railroad Right-of-Way Line in the City of Tampa. Hillsborough County, Florida, the sa- the same being more fully described in section one here of subject to certain easements, reservations, conveyance, conditions, and restrictions, more particularly set forth herein, providing effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Miranda, please record your vote. Uh, Councilman Dingfelter, we need your, we need your vote.
Yes, you do.
We need it.
Thank you.
Motion carried unanimously with Vera being absent.
All right, item number seventy-three.
Mary Samaniego, item number seventy-three is REZ nineteen ninety-two. It's a rezoning request for a plan development for second reading. All required changes have been made at the City Council's hearing.
All right, any questions? Applicant? No? Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number seventy-three?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda, with a second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Councilman Citro?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, file number REZ nineteen dash ninety-two. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of eleven oh two, eleven twelve, eleven sixteen East Carmen Street in the City of Tampa, Florida. And more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification, IG, industrial general to PD plan development residential multifamily, providing, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Miranda, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Vera being absent.
Okey-dokey, number seventy-four here, we have a, um, a memo from uh, City Assistant City Attorney Kate Wells, asking that we continue this to February twentieth, twenty twenty.
Move that item number seventy-four be continued to February twentieth, twenty twenty at the ten thirty hour.
We have motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number seventy-five, I see that this cannot be heard. Can I get a motion to remove this from the agenda?
Actually, um, if I may-
For the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, um, items seventy-four and seventy-five are related. Um, so you have continued item seventy-four at my request, and with regard to item seventy-five, um, I have filed, and it should be in your records, a resolution rescinding the prior resolutions setting the public hearing for today, and then rescheduling the public hearings for February twentieth at ten thirty, and March fifth at nine thirty, and that way it will be, this item will be heard in tandem with the previous application that was just-
In regard to item seventy-five, I'll move, uh, I'll move those two dates. And specifically want to point out that that would be, February twentieth is oh two two zero two zero two zero.
I did that intentionally, thank you.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Dingfelter, do we have a second? Second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Thank you.
Now we go to item seventy-six, which is a, uh, petition for review.
Good afternoon, Council, uh, Susan Johnson Velez, Legal Department. Um, council members, this is a review hearing for an SU one special use permit, which, um, you all are aware is that a special use is one that has already been determined in the code to be an allowed use if it meets the criteria that are specified in the code for the specific use, which in this case is a, an extended family residence. Those specific criteria are listed on page two of the staff report that you have in your agenda backup. So this application doesn't meet the code criteria, so your staff could not approve the application because staff cannot grant waivers. So petitioner is here to request waivers from council this afternoon, and council is able to grant the waivers if you find that the application after granting the waiver is consistent with the applicable general standards set forth in section twenty-seven dash one twenty-nine of the code. So this review hearing is de novo, which means that you are not limited in your review to the information, documentation, or evidence that staff used in its review. Uh, you must apply the criteria in your code to the evidence presented, and in a moment I will pass out the criteria that you're used to evaluate the waiver requests, as well as sample motions for your consideration. And Eric Cotton will come forward to present the case to you and explain the requested waivers.
All right.
I need to get this one.
Do some swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, Council Eric Cotton, Planning and Development. Um, as Ms. Johnson Velez just said, this is a petition for review for SU one nineteen fifty-two. Mr. Ford is behind me, um, applied for a extended family residence at eight fifteen West Columbus Drive. This is the property, it's on the north side of Columbus, at Royal Court. Um, let me blow it up a little bit. Let me see where it's located. So, um, there's two criteria that he did not meet that are set forth in the code under section twenty-seven one thirty-two. An extended family residence, maximum size for one is, um, six hundred square feet. The proposed extended family residence is seven hundred twenty square feet. And the other provision in the code says an extended family residence may be designed to be located within a single-family dwelling with a separate address or a conforming accessory structure. However, it may not be located in a non-conforming accessory structure or structure made conforming to a variance. So, I'm looking at the site plan. The applicant has two accessory structures. Just so you know, under the zoning code, Royal Courts, they consider the front yard as the narrowest portion of the property. So, there's two accessory structures. This one's non-conforming, it's too close to the front of half, it has a sixty-foot setback. And this, neither of them meet the required side yard setbacks. So, um, total square footage of the accessory structures is two thousand one hundred sixty-six square feet. Maximum size in the RS fifty for an accessory structure, regardless of whether what is being used for is seven hundred fifty square feet. So, based on those two criteria, the first, the maximum size of the extended family residence and the maximum size of accessory structures, administratively, we have to deny the request, and then the applicant, the petitioner, and appeal to the City Council. Just so you know, um, these are the two structures in question, let me go back out. Um, this is the proposed extended family residence, according to the property appraiser's office, this was built nineteen forty. The house was built in nineteen twenty, in nineteen twenty-eight, the main house, and there's an accessory structure in the back, which I didn't see a date on it on the property appraiser's webpage. But, um, that's the, the reason why we're before you today. If you have any questions, let me run that between us for you.
Any questions for the general?
I, I'm just looking at the photographs.
Yes, sir.
What's the zoning on the land?
RS fifty residential-
RS fifty. And, and do these structures, I see the top building's got two front doors?
Um, it probably was a duplex back in the day, probably before Mr. Ford owned it. Um, there is a comment in the city's mainframe saying it lost its non-conforming status. Had it had, based, there was two processes he could have gone through not to get off track. There was a formal decision process he could go through to try to prove the non-conforming status of the duplex. Um, if he could not prove that, it's a, an appeal process that goes before a special hearing master, before it gets to the City Council. So we counseled him to go through this route because it's quicker and easier.
I just want to make sure I heard right, Mr. Cotton, that is now not a rental home.
No, sir, it's, um, his, I think his sister lives there.
Can I say, um-
I'm done, if you have any other questions for me, council?
Any other questions?
Okay.
I bought the place thirty-
Please say your name for the record.
Charles Ford, uh, eight fifteen West Columbus Drive, Tampa, Florida. I bought the place about thirty years ago, and I've been living there with my family, I have a wife, six kids, and two older sisters. And when we bought the place, they told it was grandfathered in. And so one of my sisters lived upstairs, other lived downstairs, a two-bedroom apartment, duplex, on these, up and down. So we've been living there for the last thirty years, and I ain't had no problem out of the neighborhood or anything else. Just like he said, I bought the place for fifty-five thousand dollars, now it's worth about five hundred thousand. Yes. And, uh, I've been a officer for the state for twenty-five years. Had no problem out of the neighborhood at all. I retired five years ago. And in the last year, I spent part of my retirement money and put a big pool in my yard. And one of the neighbors, uh, somebody complained. I hadn't had any problems in the neighborhood thirty years, back by anything. And I have a large family. My sisters and brothers have stayed in the apartment building, that's why we bought the place. One of my sisters passed away of cancer. My son is staying in one of the apartments downstairs, but they've been really good to me, explained to me the process, how I had to go. I still gotta go in front of the magistrate on the eighteenth, because last time I was down there, um, I had already applied down here, and I tried to cancel this appointment, but you guys was closed during the holidays, so I had to, I couldn't postpone it. And what he said was, maybe I shouldn't have to come down here, because they should have reviewed it, because they said the place was vacant for a hundred and eighty days back in nineteen ninety. And they did, I mean, it was just, it wasn't just vacant, I mean, I'm trying to think of the word. Like the owner had just left the state and things like that, but it was in the realtor's hands out in Plant City. So it just wasn't, a lost piece of property. They just hadn't sold it, nobody lived in there for like about six months or more. Until I noticed it, and I tried to buy it, and another person did buy it, and I bought it from him. But, uh, like I say, the city came out, when I was working fifteen years ago, gave me a citation. People gonna live there, you gotta have screen windows on the whole apartment, and this and that and everything else. And I had some trees cut down in the alley. So, fifteen years ago, I did that. I put screens around the whole apartment building, clean up the trash, citations was gone. Nothing was ever said. And here it is, I'm retired old man, seventy-two years old, uh, on a pension. Now all of this comes up, and the last six months I've been going through, A T L L, hell. But they've been working with me a hundred percent. I mean, I, it's like, I've been going back and forth through them, and I can't say anything bad about the-
Why can't?
No, no, I really can't. They want to give me, they want to give me a room inside there, I'm trying to tell you, you know? And this is where I'm at, I'm just kinda sick, I'm tired of it, I just want to be left in peace in my retirement. You know, I've been with my wife fifty-two years, and, uh, I think we done did our job, and we just want to sit back and enjoy my grandkids. But this has been a problem now, and it hasn't been a problem for thirty years, since nineteen-
But you're not renting it out to anyone, you just have family living here.
My family has been, my, my sister is eighty years old, she's saying she's gotta move out of her place. What I had to do is take, it had two kitchens inside there.
Yeah.
And I had to take one kitchen out to make it an in-laws apartment, because they said you can't have an in-laws apartment with two kitchens. So I ended up taking one of the whole kitchens out. And then my son is twenty-nine years old. He comes next door to mom's house, gets, cooks his food and everything else. But for thirty years, both my sisters had their own kitchens. And I ain't never had no problem out of it.
But you're not running a business, this is just for family, and that's it.
I've been a, like I said, I've been working sixteen hours a day as an officer for the state. I worked five years as a paramedic at St. Joe's. I didn't have to rent it out because I got such a large family. I come from a family of like thirteen. And my dad asked me to take care of my two older sisters, and didn't, never got married or anything else. And she's been getting her disability check for the last thirty years at that apartment right there.
All right.
You know, so I'm just, this is just all crazy, all of a sudden, the last six months, what I've been going through.
Councilman Ryan.
Unless you know more than I do, it may not be a neighbor.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it may not be.
No, I know that, because I get offers.
Let me tell you why.
I get offers every day.
Yeah, because code enforcement now has become instead of reactive, proactive. And they're going to streets and they're looking, and what they see. And, and, and these things are happening, not primarily in this area where you live, I know where you live at, you live just, you live just west of, uh, of North Boulevard, one of two, three streets. So there, I used to have a trumpet, uh, teacher, I used to go play trumpet when I was a teenager. But what I'm saying is that these are the things that are proactive for the code enforcement, could have been them. Uh, there is a way that you have to take the picture of the relative in the back, am I correct?
Correct, um, Eric Cotton Zone, or Planning and Development. Mr. Ford was going through the special use process, that would allow him to have his, his relatives live there, just taking care of all that issue. It's just the two issues that are before council. The size of the extended family residence and the overall square footage of the accessory structures.
What, what's happening in just west of you, the other side of the bridge, primarily?
Oh.
They get a residential house, they call it into four places, and they rent a garage, or really used to be a, a garage that they enclosed, sixteen by nine for seven hundred dollars a month. And in that little area, sixteen by nine, you got a toilet, a kitchen, everything. So you walk like this, you go to bed, and you gotta watch TV in bed. I'm telling you what's going on. There was two hundred and thirty-two of these found in a very small area in West Tampa, two hundred and thirty-two of them. So, they're all in violation on the other side. So I'm just letting you know, I appreciate you coming back and telling us-
I've been a law-abiding citizen, I'm from California, and we moved here.
Let me go somewhere, and I'm gonna check it out. Thirty-two oh five Lincoln came up to me, I think that was the lady we had here, said, I remember, uh, it passed our council, and he said, no, that's my relative. But I'm gonna put a wall. I said, if you're gonna put a wall, that can't be your relative, because you want people to eat. And guess what? If it's thirty-two oh-five Lincoln, it's for sale, because I drive by all those houses when they think that something's wrong. But I'm not saying it's wrong, not in your case.
Yeah.
I'm gonna verify what I'm saying.
Counselman...
Thank you very much, though.
Counselman Dinkfelder.
Okay. Um, just some, and, and I, I appreciate your testimony and your candor on all this. Um, my only concern would, would be is if you sold the property twenty years from now or something, you know?
If I be alive.
Well, somebody's...
I'm seventy-two, I'm seventy-two, twenty years from now.
You look great, you look great. Well, you get my point is, on my question to Ms. Zelman a minute ago was, would, does this approval run with the land or is it just run with hi- with him? And that's a legal, a legal question or a...
With it?
It's not a question to you, sir, I'm sorry. This is a technical question, I need to ask staff, Ms., uh, Ms. Velez or Mr., uh, whatever. I think it's more of a legal question, to be honest, but...
Yeah, I think if you look, I don't...
We have three attorneys who are hesitating.
Well, Eric Cotton, planning and development, under the code, when you have a special use one for an extended family residence, once a year, we verify who is living there, there's a process we go through. If the property changes hands or the relative changes, we're supposed to be notified and at that, and we, we verify that. And that's the case, and the person has to apply for a new special use.
Okay.
So, if Mr. Ford were to sell the property fifteen, twenty years from now, um, the special use would go away in this case.
And I, and, and to address Mr. Miranda's concerns, I think that's good. You know, I think it's great you have a family compound. I'm jealous. I wish my grandchildren were nearby, and we could do that too. But, but that's a side point. But my point is, is it's great what you're doing there, I'm gonna support it unless there's some amazing reason not to. But I just want to make sure that it, it wouldn't continue after you guys were gone. And that's, that's neither here nor there, so...
My main question, I gotta go back in front of the magistrate, March, uh, eighteenth at one o'clock. And he's gonna ask me...
Eric will dress up.
What I'm trying to say is, but, he's gonna ask me about, they was gonna reverse the, um, grandfathered-in-ship, because they found out it was not vacant, I mean, it wasn't, uh...
Occupied.
Yeah, well, it, it was just deserted, the property wasn't deserted. They were supposed to check back with me on it, instead of having, it's fine if I can get it, just like you said, in-law suite, I'd go with that. But if I can just get it where it was just grandfathered in, back in, that's even better, I would think. Then I don't have to report once a year in case my son move out and my nephew moves in, or my daughter, my son moves out and then my daughter moves in. Kids always come back home, seem like it, you know? And plus, I got brothers and sisters. Like I said, I come from a large family, twelve. I have half of them over here and half of them in Louisville, Kentucky.
Maybe Mr. Cotton can help us on some of that.
I have let my nephew stay in one of the apartments, and I had my son stay with my sister. You know, I just, I never had no problem having to check with anybody in thirty years, you know? And so, I think I did my dues for the state of, state of Florida, man, twenty-five years as an officer, come on, I'm, I'm retired, you know?
All right.
I just don't want, I never been to nothing like this, I've never been to the magistrate for anything.
We have great minds conferring over here, so why don't we just give it, give it a second?
I just don't want reports, report, report, that's all.
Eric Cotton, land development, or planning and development. The applic- the process to establish a non-conformity is not through the code enforcement process, it's a formal decision through the zoning administrator. When we discussed that, when he first came into the office, we discussed that with Mr. Ford, and we figured this would be a better process to go through, which was going before city council on an appeal of a special use permit. One of the criteria of a special use permit, besides the two that we've addressed already, is that a special use permit shall be reviewed annually by staff, and if any conditions or occupants change, a new special use will be required. Council could waive that requirement and, and say, well, we'll, we'll still review it annually, we just want to, and just at least let staff know who your relative is that's living in the location at the time. If it, if for some reason his sister were to pass away and a relative, another relative were to move in, at least for, at least for the city, we would know who the relative is and who's living in that location. And again, that would be on a yearly basis.
And she's eighty years old, so I don't know how much longer she do got, I mean, if she's healthy, but still, I just hate the idea that I gotta start reporting to the city.
I, I hope she lives to be a hundred. Counselman Miranda.
And I'm, I'm getting close to being a hundred, for just today. But what I'm trying to say is this, we gotta understand the whole picture. If it happens to yours, what about the other two hundred and thirty-two houses in West Tampa? What do I do when they come? They're gonna come, they're gonna come. And, and they're not like you. They've done it without nothing. They have cars, that there's no driveway, no yard, no nothing, it looks like a motel. And at night, it is a motel, you go by and you say, what the world is this?
Mine's the best house on the block.
I'm not saying it's not.
It really is, so...
But I don't have five hundred and fifty thousand, thank you, you trying to sell it?
Well, I, I took...
I'm only joking.
I took a hundred, I...
I want to come to a resolution to help you. Mr. Cotton said that all you gotta do is just notify who's living there, and they come, take it again. It's, it's not gonna, if it's a relative, you got no problem.
It don't seem like you're free like that.
I understand, listen, I'm never free.
And I ain't had to report to, nobody except for my superintendent while I was working. And I don't have him no more. You know, I mean, I reported to my dad, right? But, uh, every year that, okay, you gotta give him a call, okay?
They come check yourself, you don't do it, they come in and look, and they take the picture, that's what they do. So, I want to support you, I want to help you, but I can't do it all the way, I just can't do it because I know what's coming.
All right. Any other questions? No? Anybody in the, uh, public wish to speak on this item? No?
Somebody help me out.
All right.
We have to close.
We got a motion close from Councilman Dean Felder, second from Councilman Goode's. All in favor?
Aye.
What is the pleasure of council on item number seventy-six? You have the, uh, special use motions in front of you.
I would support a special use based on the city's criteria. And if not, they're not gonna inspect you, what, they come in once a year, they, or what Mr. Cotton said, just give it where, as long as he has, that's a relative coming in, as long as it's a relative, I want to stay with the law. But the others, two hundred and thirty-two, two hundred, well, I can't help you, that's, I'm sorry, thank you very much.
Well, my eighty-year-old sister...
I'm seventy-nine, I can't help you.
She's gonna be happy she ain't getting kicked out of her apartment. That's her face. You're trying to fight with an eighty-year-old sister.
Your thing is closed.
All right, we close the hearing. Uh, anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make, I'll make a shot at it. I, um, Mr. Cotton, you, sir, you could, you could alleviate the podium there.
Yes, sir.
Just a technical clarification, it's not really, it's not fact. You said we could, with the motion, I could waive, um, I'm not gonna waive the annual requirement of visiting, but I could waive what?
Well, the, one of the criterias, uh, says the special use permit shall be reviewed annually by staff, and if conditions or occupants change, a new special use permit would be required, or will be required. You could phrase a motion, if you're so inclined, to require the annual inspection, but waive the, waive the requirement of a new application if the relative were to change. As long as it's a family member, we have evidence of that, we could, you could waive that requirement. I'll let Susan.
No, and I, I'm not disagreeing with, I just want to clarify too, there, there are two waivers that, that were already being requested, right? And so, that, the one that Mr. Cotton just described would be in addition to the two that were already requested in the petition for review.
All right. So, somebody remind me which number this is, because I got...
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I will move. I'm sorry. Yeah, I got the motion. Okay, in regard to, uh, item, uh, file E-two-zero-one-nine-dash-eight, chapter twenty-seven, um, in regard to the review petition for, of Charles R. Ford, SU, uh, SU-one-dash-nineteen-dash-fifty-two, property at eight fifteen West Columbus Drive, I'll move to approve this petition, uh, as a special use permit. I believe the petitioner has met its burden of, his burden of proof, provide competent substantial evidence that the special use permit as conditioned and shown on the site plan is consistent with the conference of plan in the city code. Um, specifically that, uh, he's been living there on this sort of family compound, um, with, uh, extended family, um, children, uh, sisters, et cetera, nephews, um, for thirty years. And, um, uh, that there's no adverse, uh, adverse conditions, uh, in regard to the neighborhood. Uh, we don't, we haven't heard any objections from the community, and, uh, and I believe it's reasonable. I, I would grant the two waivers requested. In addition, I would also, um, include a special, a special condition that he would have to get re-inspected once a year. However, if the, as long as it's only family members who are residing on the property with him, that, uh, that, that the special use permit would continue to be granted, period.
Do we have a second? We have a second, Councilman Carlson, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried.
Yeah, no, Citro and Miranda, no, I was in eyes.
Okay. Motion carried with Citro and Miranda voting no, and Vera being asked.
All right, thank you very much. Item number seventy-seven needs to be removed. I'm sorry, needs to be rescheduled.
Item seventy-seven, rescheduled for April the second, twenty-twenty at ten-thirty a.m.
Second.
We have a motion for Councilman Miranda, second for Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, last item is number ninety, that's Mrs. Zelman. Thank you very much.
Andrea Zelman, Legal Department, with a last name like mine, I'm used to going last. Um, I did want to put something on the overhead.
Yep, the opportunity zone, oh, good.
Um, okay, the motion was about, um, opportunity zones, and I think the primary point I wanted to make, and let me back up, I did submit a PowerPoint, and I will admit, the PowerPoint was completely and totally stolen from Michelle Van Loon, whose name I even left on it. Um, she has a very lengthy PowerPoint about opportunity zones. Um, I reduced it to fifteen slides, I think it's still way too detailed. I'm happy to go through it if you would like me to, but I wanted to first give some introductory remarks that may answer some of your questions and obviate the need for the PowerPoint. Um, basically, the thing to know about opportunity zones, because there's a lot of misconceptions about what they are, they really are a product of the twenty-seventeen Federal, um, Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, Jobs Act. And the act created a vehicle by which real estate investors could defer paying capital gains on the sale of stocks and assets and real property by taking the money that they make from the sale and reinvesting it or investing it in a certified opportunity zone fund. And the concept was that, um, by providing real estate investors with large holdings with an incentive to invest in areas that had been identified as opportunity zones, it would spur redevelopment and economic development in otherwise challenged areas. So, well, after the act was passed in twenty-eighteen, um, the local governments throughout the country were involved with identifying census tracts within their jurisdiction that they requested be included on the opportunity zones map. And at the time, the city of Tampa submitted a number of census tracts to the state. The state reviewed them, the state, um, could not, I think there were something like statewide, over a thousand tracts identified. Ultimately, um, the state of Florida was limited to four hundred and twenty-seven census tracts statewide that were designated as qualified opportunity zones. In the city of Tampa, there are twenty-two. And again, this overhead shows you the census tracts, um, in the city. And as you can see, most of them, but not all, are also within CRAs, um, downtown, Ebor, some of West Tampa, um, some near the university area, but not quite, um, all the way up there. In any event, that was, that was really the limits of the city's involvement, was identifying those tracts that they thought would qualify. After that, opportunity zones really become, again, a tax vehicle for private investors. Um, oper- investors in opportunity zone funds have to invest. An opportunity zone fund is set up with the investments made by the investors. The fund must invest ninety percent of its fund within a qualified opportunity zone within a certain timeframe in order to be eligible for the capital gains tax deferment. Um, the act limits, you know, what they can invest in, certain types of businesses and real property within that opportunity zone. And with regard to council's question about whether any opportunity zone funds have been created in the city of Tampa, what I learned when I did this research was that it's very difficult for us to obtain that information because, again, these are private real estate investors who don't necessarily want to make public the fact that they've made these types of investments. Um, and also, as some of you may be aware, opportunity zones nationwide have received, received some bad press. There was a report about someone in South Florida that got a yacht basin identified, qualified as an opportunity zone. So, um, really, the investors who have invested in these funds don't necessarily want to talk about it. Um, so, we are not aware, with regard, and I think the other question that the council had asked was, have these been a success? Well, um, I did speak with someone who's very involved with opportunity zones nationwide. And in some parts of the country where a city or town was having a particularly hard time, um, getting economic development and redevelopment to happen, um, they had very active programs to encourage people to invest in opportunity zones. For instance, in Erie, Pennsylvania, there was a joint effort by an insurance company and the town, and they really pushed it. Um, so, I would say there's been limited success nationwide. In Tampa, it's really hard to measure, because of course, we're in a booming economy right now, we have a lot of development going on. It's hard to say whether the ability to get these capital gains tax deferments, whether or not they were an incentive, we really don't know. I mean, you can look at the map and see, um, where the opportunity zones are. Um, you know, for instance, you know, we, we know that in downtown Tampa, there's a lot of development going on. There's a number of census tracts in downtown that are opportunity zones. Did the development predate the creation of these opportunity zones in some cases? Yes, so we really, it's really hard to match up whether they have actually spurred anything. Um, and then I think the final question, I know, um, someone was here at one of our CRA meetings asking that some new tracts be, um, designated as opportunity zones. Well, that would require an act of Congress. It would act, require the, um, federal House and Senate to agree to amend the act to reopen the process by which opportunity, the original opportunity zone census tract map was created. Um, that's what I've been advised, it's po- the, the only other possible option was what would be the U.S. Treasury Department doing it by rule. But my understanding is that it would have to be done by the Congress. Either way, it would be the federal government, and certainly not at the local level. So, again, I can go through the PowerPoint, which I did provide you with in advance. It really goes into a lot of detail that frankly is more of interest to private real estate investors and not to the council. So, um, for the sake of time, I'm happy to skip it unless you want to go through it, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions, Councilman Miranda?
Um, are these, uh, opportunity zones transferable?
Transferable?
Yeah.
No. Again, the tract, the, the map was, was put in place by the, by the U.S. Treasury Department in twenty-eighteen.
The reason I say that, because there've been some news articles, uh, sometime in the past, that some were transferred from the area of, uh, the vicinity, I shouldn't say the area, the vicinity of Armenian Hills Grove. But I don't see that here as any opportunity zone.
I, I believe I know what you're referring to, so, again, back in...
Because I don't know.
Back in twenty-eighteen, twenty-seventeen, eighteen, after the, um, act was passed, again, the city of Tampa sent the Florida DEO all the census tracts that it thought would qualify. Rick Scott's, or the DEO office, the governor's office in cooperation with DEO, then created a map for the entire state of Florida. There were some tracts in Tampa that, um, I, I think what happened was Mayor Buckhorn then contacted the... then contacted the state, or someone contacted the state and said, you know, you didn't put this one on, but you put these on and these, this one, we have, is more economically challenged than that one, or something like that. They agreed to remove some and put another one on or another two on. Again, that happened in twenty eighteen, and that was before the map became final. Once the map became final by the federal government, it can't be changed.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Thank you for the report. Very nice.
Thank you very much. That concludes the agenda. Let's go to new business, Councilman Carlson.
I've been having conversations with Chief Staff about parking enforcement. You know, he and the mayor both were police officers. And there's a, there's a burden on police officers that there's so much parking enforcement that goes on throughout the city. In fact, we just did a, an event at someone's house in Hyde Park where we had about twenty police officers there. And we talked about it. But at the same time, there are neighbors who want to get people to stop parking illegally in front of their yards. And so anyway, with the to and fro, I'd like to make a motion that staff report on the possibility of creating a citywide parking enforcement division that would be self-funding and reduce the burden on the police force.
Second.
We have a motion for Councilman Carlson with a second from Councilman Miranda. Do we have a date?
No, no. Sorry, can you guys look at a date? I thought, I was reminded by this one of the thing that, which is, whenever we can get it on. At, at least a month out, a couple months.
March fifth.
March fifth? All right, we have a motion for Councilman Carlson, second for Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else?
Aye. Yeah, at lunch, I think you all went to the fair. I went to the Athena meeting where we were all thanked again for supporting the, the ERA amendment. Thank you all for doing that. And I ran to Betty Castor, who asked me to make a motion, so I will. She would, I would like to make a motion that Betty Castor appear before council on Thursday, March twelfth for ten minutes to present regarding the need for impact fees for schools. She was
Second.
The motion for Councilman Carlson, second for Councilman Citro.
Restate the motion, okay?
I would like to make a motion that Betty Castor appear before council on Thursday, March twelfth for ten minutes to present regarding the need for impact fees for schools. She
Did she, did she mean an increase? Because there are school impact fees. I'm assuming she meant an increase in the school.
It's a very, it's, it was a very complicated thing, I think, too complicated for a motion. But she, she, and I, and, and she knows that we might, may not have direct influence over it, but she wants to have a conversation about it and also maybe through the TV and influence the public or, or educate the public.
Okay, we have a motion for Councilman Carlson, second for Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anything else, sir?
Nope.
Councilman Miranda.
I would like to make a motion to present a recommendation to Kathy Beck, who will be retiring sometime in March, and I'll set the date with that retirement's gonna be.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second for Council, a motion for Councilman Miranda, second for Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, sir?
That's it, sir.
Councilman Citro.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Members of City Council, Ms. Chelsea Johnson, who was my appointee to the Citizens Advisory Budget and Finance Committee, can no longer hold that position. And I move to appoint Mr. Jeffrey Natupski to that position.
Second. We have a motion for Councilman Citro, second for Councilman Dean Felder. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anything else, sir?
I just thank Ms. Chelsea Johnson for all her hard work in this matter, and she did very, very well. And I will, I am sad to see her not being on this, but I'm looking forward to Jeffrey filling her high heels.
Thank, thank you very much. Councilman Goots.
Thank you, Chair. Gentlemen, for, for some, a couple of months now, we've been having a little uproar in my district, especially the middle core of East Tampa, as you know, related to these parks, especially Fair Oaks Playground and the Al Barnes Park. As the District Five Councilman, it breaks my heart to see my community infighting with one another. And I'm just tired of hearing and seeing the infighting. Every time I go somewhere, the constant infighting. With no real direction right now and really no real numbers. I've got a couple of motions, I'm gonna ask first, who's pulled on for both the parks. And I think it'll give a little more clarity of when we talk about cost. What, what is the actual cost? Because we really don't know what the actual cost is for Fair Oaks. We got, we got numbers thrown out, but no actual cost of anything, just numbers. And I think that's wrong. I think we need to identify what, what should be, what shouldn't be, so that people can know and make sure that the people on the other end for the Al Barnes situation know that we're still willing and committed to what they asked for during election time. Over the past weeks, you know, I've, I've, I've been on the scenes, I've been, I've driven around the parks with Chief of Staff, remember the Al Barnes, our cultural arts center. I've been meeting with some donors. Hopefully, within a couple of weeks, I may know something about some funding to help out, maybe both the parks. But at this particular time, the first motion I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that contract administration and the Parks and Recreation Department will begin looking into a design bill contract for Al Barnes Park, which already has allocated resources. Design bill is a method of project delivery in which one entity, the design bill team, works under a single contract with the project owner to provide the design and construction services. One entity, one contract, one unified floor work for initial concept through completion. Design bill is actually more cost-effective than traditional project delivery in many situations. This is a project, budget is identified early in the process and continuously maintained through a highly collaborative process. Advantages to that design bill, bill's teamwork, single point of responsibility, open transparent communication, eliminates adversarial conditions, not restricted to, to building types, faster project delivery. In addition to saving time, I found a project can save anywhere from six percent to ten percent when using a design bill process instead of traditional construction. Gentlemen, that's my first motion.
Second. We have a motion for Councilman Goots, second for Councilman Dean Felder. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to do the same thing for Fair Oaks. I won't read all the other issues about design bill, but I just want to say, like, make a motion for contract administration and Parks and Recreation Department to begin looking into a design bill contract for Fair Oaks Park.
Second. We have a motion for Councilman Goots, second for Councilman Dean Felder. All in favor?
Do they have, do these have a return date?
Yeah, I got effective date, three nineteen, so they can come back and give us some information reference, three nineteen, three nineteen twenty.
March nineteen. Okay, anything else, sir?
That's it, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Dean Felder.
Yes, sir. Two, two, two small items. A builder came up to me the other day and, and, and said that he said he'd like to build some affordable housing, but in order to do that, he'd like to do it on smaller lots. And I said, well, it's problematic because I don't think we have anything smaller than the RS fifty. And he's talking about like a, like a thirty-five foot lot or that sort of thing. I said, I knew, I do know that in West Tampa, in certain conditions in the overlay zone for, you know, lots that were platted a hundred years ago, that we did allow that. We still do allow that to a certain extent under certain conditions. But that only applies to, you know, I think, West Tampa. So with that, what I'd like to ask is, in the name of affordable housing, I'd like staff, planning staff and legal to come back to us in ninety days with some thoughts on the possibility of, of where, you know, of, of, could we have smaller zoning lots? And if it wasn't, and I don't think we can do that citywide, but maybe there's some districts, some neighborhoods that would like that or that already have that pattern, you know, going and that sort of thing. And that would appreciate, you know, you have a smaller, a smaller lot, you have a smaller house, you have a smaller price, and maybe there's some neighborhoods that would receive that favorably. So anyway, so that's a ninety-day request for staff to take a look at that issue on, on the possibility of smaller lots.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
For discussion, I'll discuss it because I, I'm, I'm not involved in that, but I can only think that you cannot just say right now, those lots are in West Tampa, or they've been there for a hundred years. But if you're saying that you're gonna cut the city to some degree to only those lots being in a certain area of town, I don't know if that's constitutional.
I'm not mandating it. I'm saying it's a possibility.
No, I didn't say you were. I didn't say you were.
That somebody could come, I'll just give you an example. Somebody has an acre of land that they put together, let's say, a mile from here in some direction. And, and they go, well, my only choices are, you know, are ten houses with an RS fifty or come in with a P D. And the P D's very expensive, and the P D's very time-consuming. But if we had another category that was like an RS thirty, then maybe they could be a little more creative and put in smaller houses. What are those metal ones called? The
Modular?
The container houses, you know, that sort of thing. Be a little more creative. Anyway.
Believe me, containers are not less expensive than, I'm finished it up for a square foot from what I've seen in, in the price. But my problem is with myself is I, I can't support something that's not citywide. Because then you're gonna dump all that in one neighborhood.
But what if they want it? Well, let's just see what staff comes back and says. I mean, that's all I'm looking forward to today, Joe.
I understand. We have motion from Councilman Dean Felder. Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll, I'll support it today. I don't know about it in the future.
Councilman Goots gave the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, sir?
Yes. I don't know if you guys noticed, when I drive around town, my eye pulls to these small digital signs. I'm not talking about the billboards. I'm talking about the small signs that are on small businesses. And, and I'm not saying whether or not those signs are legal or not, but a lot of times what I see is, is they scroll. You know, they roll through and they scroll and they flash and, and that sort of thing. All of that is contrary to the ordinance. I just, Ms. Elman helped me a minute ago. Chapter twenty-seven dash two eighty-nine dot four specifically says that the dwell time, the frozen time, has to be at least fifteen seconds. You can't have flashing. You can't have movement. And the brightness has to be controlled by point zero three foot candles, whatever a foot candle is. But anyway, my question to code enforcement, and I'd like a report back in sixty days, is I'd like to know what, if any, enforcement they've done under chapter twenty-seven, two eighty-nine dot four over the last, let's say, two years. And if they have any way of recording this, I'd like to see a list of where they, you know, what sort of enforcement they've done and what the result was. I have a feeling that they're very busy people and that this is a low priority. But it, frankly, if we have the law on the books, I think we should follow it.
I agree with you, and I second the motion because I agree with you. And you can't, you can't see the brightness during the day. It's gotta be at night.
Yep.
We have a motion for Councilman Dean Felder, second for Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, sir?
That's all. Thank you.
Well, mine is just an acknowledgement on the passing of a gentleman named Joe Calta Geroni. Some of you all knew him. Passed away, I believe, this morning or late last night. Ninety-three years old, World War II veteran. Very involved in the Italian Club, he and his brother. I believe his father and he were members from maybe the nineteen thirties, nineteen twenties. He claimed to be the first family to live in Seminole Heights back in the nineteen thirties. I've known him since probably the day I was born, if not the day after. Because I know he and his wife were visitors. He never had children, but he had about twenty god children, godsons and goddaughters. A wonderful man, very involved in the Italian Club Cemetery, has an architect. He worked for the McEwen Group, of one of many, and he designed the mausoleum in the Italian Club Cemetery. He's gonna be buried in a mausoleum, a crypt that he designed, which is near another gentleman that was very well-known, Victor Di Maio Senior, not, not the son. And that was it. It's, it's a huge loss. A man who would tell you history, you would say your name and he would say, oh, your family is this, or your father was so-and-so. Or I remember living, breathing history. He told me what Ebor City was like in the nineteen thirties, riding the streetcar, how they would make Cuban sandwiches in the windows, and they would slice the pickles long ways, so you would get a pickle in every bite. But he taught me a lot. If you talked to him, many of you met him, you know, you'd learn things that you could never read in any book because he witnessed them. So I just want to offer my condolences. Can I get a motion received and filed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Goots. All in favor?
Aye.
And anyone in the public wish to speak, sir? No? All right, we are adjourned.
Good job, man.